Welcome, everybody, to the special meeting of the Board of Education on Friday, March 17th. For those of you celebrating, Happy St. Patty's Day. First, we want to begin as we acknowledge the traditional ancestral and ceded territory of the Chumash Tongva, Fernando de Nio Totavium, and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance, so please join me. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Quiterio, if you could please take roll call at this time.
Member Tabit.
Present.
Member Ponstrakamkar.
Present.
Plurkaga Konian. Vice President Weisberg.
Present.
President Ferguson.
Present. All five board members are present, so we do have a quorum to proceed with the business of the meeting. As Dr. Weisberg mentioned, there are blue cards in the back. If you do intend on speaking during tonight's meeting, please fill out one of those cards and get it down to us. We'll accept cards until the last speaker has finished speaking. With that, we will go to item number two, which is request to address the board. Do we want to do virtual speakers first? Let's do our virtual public comment first. Okay, so we'll go to Elizabeth first, and then if folks join throughout the course, we can hop back. But let's take Elizabeth Periara first.
Elizabeth, if you unmute, and if you want, you can turn your camera on, but you're able to speak at this time.
Hi, yes, so my, I guess, question or concern that I wanted to put out there regarding the school safety issue is that my son does attend Warta, and he does attend an after-school program. And at that after-school program, I'm sorry about my background noise. At that after-school program, he attends. I have, at times, been able to walk onto the campus, and I'm just curious as to what modifications can be made so that, you know, not just anyone can walk in and into the campus. That's all.
Okay, and just as a heads up, we will respond to public comment at the very end. So I'll ask staff for questions especially like that, that we're taking those down so that we can get an answer to them. Okay, are we have no other virtual public comment speakers? Okay.
Thank you.
Great. We are going to then go to the cards, so I will call the cards as they come in. The first is Linda Thomas, followed by Irma Avellar Solorio. And please come down to the front table and speak into the mic. That way, folks at home can hear.
And if you have cards that you haven't turned in, you can bring them over here to us whenever you get a chance.
Hi, I'm Linda Thomas. I have two boys who graduated from Burbank Unified Schools. One just graduated, actually, mid-year.
Oh, they can't hear you. Would you mind speaking into the microphone?
Thank you.
Okay.
I know this meeting is about school safety. I wanted to raise an issue about, not stranger safety, but about the safety of our students with teachers in particular in the school district. My student, my younger son, had an incident his freshman year at Burrows with a teacher who was giving him back rubs. I reported to his counselor, concerned about that situation, and was required to have a meeting with the teacher in order to get him removed from the class and placed in another class. Little did I know until later that other incidents were occurring with this teacher and other students. There was an investigation, and we were contacted last spring and asked questions about this teacher's conduct, including questions around dinners at the teacher's house, none of which occurred with my student, but it made me very concerned that this was an ongoing pattern in practice of this teacher. Apparently, nothing occurred because that teacher went back in the classroom. Made me very concerned about the nature of the investigation, whether things have been pushed under the rug with respect to teacher misconduct. And that's very concerning, and I don't know that it's been adequately addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Irma Avellar Solorio. Hi there.
Hello, how are you? My name's Irma. I do have a son that goes to Mag Park. My concern and my question is if, when you have a child that's dealing with substance abuse, and they go to school, you pick them up from school, they walk out of school high from class. I understand that the teachers don't have control because we don't have school police. You know, I don't know if you guys allow the dogs to randomly come back into campus to check for drugs, but from what I understand, there is a lot of drugs on all our campuses. It's so easy for children to have access to drugs. And I know that because my son, you know, told me. So at home, we're doing our part, taking our children to substance abuse treatment, getting them into the services that they require, but when they go to school, it's so easy and tempting for them. You know, I did pick up my son a couple of weeks. I did talk to the administrator. We made a safety plan with him, and, you know, whatever they could do and help, they're very supportive. But my concern is that the drugs are being brought on campus. So, you know, as we know, fentanyl is killing a lot of children. I don't hope that doesn't happen to anybody here or anywhere, but that is my concern. If you guys have police more present, or the dogs, go check. You know, the sniffing dogs on campus, I don't know what the rules are with that, if they're implemented, but thank you.
Got it. Thank you very much for your comments. Next, Kristin Merker, followed by Miles Gilmore. Good evening.
Good evening. I wanted to address some of you. I know that I've talked to many of you over the last week in person or over VC, and I really just wanted to voice, one, that I appreciate you all taking the time to address the school safety and the sexual assault instances. However, I do feel like more needs to be done. I understand that there are things in the works right now, behind the scenes, maybe things that we're not privy to, but also I do feel like things need to be addressed a lot quicker. Over the last two weeks, I have heard lots of stories from young girls, from families and from other residents, and it is unacceptable that even two of these things have happened, let alone one or 50-plus. So this is not okay. This needs to change. Something needs to change. Families, I hope, are here to help facilitate and support that change. I also think that with the school safety, so my daughter is a senior at Burbank High, she drives every day. She, her ID has not been checked every day. I checked in with her on the way here, and I emailed the principal last weekend saying, hey, the week of the incident, my daughter's ID is not being checked. It was checked maybe twice in the five days. I never got a response, and then I asked her today, and she said it was checked some days, not every day. And this is through the garage, which my understanding is the point of entry for the intruder. So while I understand things are being done, we have a few bullet points in our emails of things that are coming. We need to act faster so this doesn't happen again, so people aren't aware of these weak points, and it's very unacceptable that there is still this happening a week later, two weeks later. And I just think we could do better for our kids and to make sure they're safe at school. And I really hope that you guys hear out the young girls, if they speak tonight, about their situations, and really take that to heart and make sure no one else has to come up here and talk.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Miles Gilmore, followed by Joel Schlossman.
Thank you. My name is Miles Gilmore. I'm a campus supervisor at Burbank High School. Today, my voice represents the pain and anger felt by our staff, our community, and myself. We feel unsafe. We are unsafe. We are afraid. We are overworked, and we are undersupervised. Since the incident on the sixth, there have been many messages sent, promises made, and perhaps a genuine attempt to analyze the situation at hand. Even if genuine, the response of the district still shows a misunderstanding of the situations facing our schools and staff. This misunderstanding comes to the surface when we observe our district's reaction, when the community feels the need to mobilize action in their own hands rather than communicating with those in the district. The reaction I've felt is, was annoyance, that those not knowing the inner working of the district would foolishly thought their outrage could cause change. This lacks critical thought and an analysis of the district's part of the contradictions plaguing our district. We must not view concerned, afraid, and/or hurt community members as mal factors, even if we disagree with their conclusions on what is to be done. Where there is anger and criticism, there is a pool of knowledge that can be studied and acted upon to be more efficient and supportive for the community we serve. We need more support for the community and for the staff. This anger is now showing in ways that makes the board's traditional tactics of quote-unquote "healing issues" ineffective. We cannot lie to our community and staff telling us we are safe when we are the ones that keep the school safe. No Zoom training will fix the systemic issues at play. We are understaffed, underpaid, and underappreciated. You cannot support your community by telling us what to do, what you believe is best for the district. You must listen to the anger and the pain felt here today. I also want to be perfectly clear that there is not a single word one of you can say or utter to fix this situation. Now is the time for action, action with thought, planning, and coordination with employees, community members, and students. Speaking as a staff member and working in position to protect the schools and the students, more training is a Band-Aid to this solution. If you want to solve the crisis plaguing our district and honor your word to protect the students, we need more staff everywhere. This cannot be done by the district listing jobs and not investigating what is needed to attract more and better employees. The fact is, we want more employees. If we want more employees, you have to pay a living wage. As a supervisor currently making seventeen an hour to be cannon fodder to protect the school, you telling us the presence of danger, you're telling us the presence of danger is our problem when you don't increase our support financially or with people on the ground and instead do an online training. This is the district not taking accountability for the issues in our schools. Employees are tired, afraid, and poor. If our students are to be safe, our employees need to be healthy, stable, and cared for. If our community, if the community is to be safe, it is time for all of you to wipe your brains of what you think is right for the community and listen to your workers, your students, and your community. You must not open, we must not just open dialogue, but action. You have no trust with your community or workers because you have given no sign that you trust them or us. This district is not safe, so do not tell us that it is. Our workers are struggling, and we are not just failing our students, but we are hurting them. If you place the responsibility onto the workers instead of addressing the issues that have been eating away at our district for a decade or more, then I wonder what your purpose is as heads of the district. I wonder why you all received the big increases. If it is the workers' issue and we are the ones that need to fix it, then stay out of our way. If you're thinking to yourselves that the issue of employee pay and work conditions is not at play in the incident of March 6th, then you have failed as leaders and organizers of this district. For the workers and community members here that trust the board's action, please ponder these questions tonight. What has changed and how do you feel safer since the violence against our LGBTQ+ students? What has changed and how do you feel safer since the death threats against our students, teachers, staff, and schools? What has changed and how do you feel safer since the district harbored a pedophile, allowing him to teach our students? Think deeply about these questions. For those that already do not trust the board and rightfully expect the board to prove themselves to us, where do we go from here? We organize, we plan, and we protect our communities. If the board sweeps students' pain under the rug, you, parents, and students have the right and duty to organize for justice. For employees that have lost faith in the board to help us raise our standard of living and help us do our job, I repeat, it is our right and duty to organize. We must hold our district accountable if they refuse to do so. Do not let the district villainize you for fighting for your well-being. Everyone must ask themselves these questions.
I need you to wrap up.
Okay.
I appreciate it. I understand. How to get to everybody at equal time.
Got you.
Thank you.
Everyone must ask themselves difficult questions, like where their intentions lie. A thought that makes clear to me the intentions of our board versus the wants of BUSD workers and community members is that it is legal for us to-
I'm sorry, we're done. Thank you. Our next speaker. And I really don't mean to be impersonal, but everybody, we want to make sure everybody has time to testify tonight. So Joel Schlossman is our next speaker, followed by Maureen Hernandez.
Good evening, folks. Aren't you embarrassed to be here? Y'all should be ashamed of yourselves. The accountability rests right there. When I ask the question, where does the buck stop? The superintendent says it stops with me. You should resign right away. If you won't resign, he should be fired. It's that simple. You should take a vote of no confidence or confidence with all your employees, a secret vote. It's not the first time I've called for it. This guy's a failure for our school district. His priorities are all wrong. Now, I've talked about this subject numerous times. When I talk about security at the school, you take turns picking on me and talking down to me, and I think that's inappropriate. This stuff is very predictable considering what's going on in our nation. We should all be very concerned about the state of and the safety of our children. You know, as an elective, you should offer a class for kids where they can participate in school safety and maybe make them part of it. Give them whistles, radios, I don't know. Something's better than nothing. Somebody wrote a letter in the paper. He talked about parking a police car out front, and that was one of my ideas as well, and I'm all for it. I want plainclothed armed security in our schools, particularly, well, you know, all our schools. I think we should have it, and I think you should do something to foster it. How about this guy Portantino, who tells us what time we can start educating our kids in the morning? Remember that guy? How about you get him to have some legislation where maybe we can get retired police officers and not tax them on their earnings? Create an incentive for them to come to work at our schools because they have decades of experience that we should not let go. And that's the type of people I want guarding our schools. Okay? See. Should have made notes. Okay, please consider these things. This is not goof around time. You know, we got off lucky on this one. And that Portantino guy, if you want to get his attention, tell him there's a mental illness involved, a homosexual involved, somebody wanting to grow a tomato, and he'll open up his checkbook. He just gave $150,000 for a community garden. Shameful to grow tomatoes when we've got bigger priorities right here.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maureen Hernandez, and I will say I don't think anybody got easy on this one. Followed by Christine Givandjian. Excuse me. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Maureen, and I have two kids in Jefferson Elementary. And this issue is about an after-school program. My first grader is in the Boys and Girls Club, and on March 3rd, individual came into campus and the playground and asked my daughter, my first grader, and another person, another child in the program, if they like puppies, and if they do, to go see puppies. He had more puppies in his car. There is an incident report that's been done with the Burbank Police Department. I have been talking to the Boys and Girls Club, Principal Young about this. Sorry, I have laryngitis. And just yesterday, my husband finds the gate, the code, that you enter a code, open with the orange cone, which I have a picture, and I did send it to the Boys and Girls Club. So my whole thing is, what can we do to protect our kids in the after-school program? Because it seems like not even two weeks from that this incident happened, the gate is open. And I mean, it could have been bad if my kid would have said, yeah, let's go see puppies. So there is an incident, and you can talk to Principal Young and get all that information, Boys and Girls Club, and they have all that information. I can provide that for information, but I am concerned for my first grader that they're small, and so if we can look into the security for our elementarys as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker after this is Marissa Ruales.
Good evening. I'm Christine Givandjian, a longtime resident of Burbank. I moved to Burbank because of Burbank schools. My son graduated in 2019 from Burbank High School, where I had to pay for him to be able to walk through Burbank High School field, to graduate in his own school that he finished. And I didn't worry about his safety as much. That I'm worried about my daughter today. I have a daughter who's in eighth grade, transitioning to high school, and she's a petite young lady that I do not feel safe for her to be in Burbank High School or anywhere in Burbank at this point. I want to know individually. I know you guys have children. Do you have children in public schools? And if you do, do they go to Burbank schools? Do you do, what do you do to protect your children? I am sorry for all my emotions, but this is not okay. It should not be happening in Burbank. We moved to Burbank because I feel that Burbank schools were top of the line. This is why I bought a small property, moved to Burbank, so my children could go to Burbank schools. My kids get invited to birthday parties. They're all in North Hollywood, Tahanga, Glendale, Granada Hills, as far as Palmdale. Why do we let these people come to our schools? We lose the sense of community when we don't have community members attending to our schools. Why is this happening? I am sure, I am positive, they have told me that a district member is telling them how to cheat the system to bring their children to Burbank schools. They arrive to LAX, and they know how to come to Burbank schools without leaving in Burbank. What are the plans for each member of you to protect my child in school, my petite fourteen-year-old? Or do I have to pay a public, I mean, private school to make sure my daughter is safe or homeschool? I know many friends of ours do not want their children to transition to Burbank High. What is the plan? Whatever the email told me, I'm not buying that. I need individuals to tell me the big changes that are going to take place in Burbank schools for our children to be safe. I know a child that the disgusting person walked into the classroom. Imagine if he had a gun. Before he walked into that restroom, he walked into a classroom. A parent told me that the daughter texted her saying, Mom, there is a creepy guy in my classroom. How is this possible? Are you guys parents? Would you let your child attend to Burbank High or any of the Burbank schools? Are you guys doing anything? I need to know what are the major changes that are going to occur for me to feel safe, for my daughter to attend that school. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marissa Ruales, followed by Carol Ann Baker. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Marissa Ruales, and I'm a seventeen-year-old who is a current student in the Burbank Unified School District. On January 22nd, 2018, I was raped by Nicholas Yahaman. At the time, I was a seventh grader, attending John Mear Middle School, and Nicholas was an eighth grader. On January 25th, I was called into my counselor, Ellen Heiser's office. One of my peers had reported the assault to the school. When I entered Ms. Heiser's office, I was sat down with her and a male police officer. I said multiple times, I was not comfortable talking in front of a male officer and requested to talk to a female, but was denied my request and was continued to be questioned. Even though I was not ready to talk about the assault, I was pressured to open up and tell them the entirety of what happened. After answering all their questions, I was sent back to class, even though I was clearly not in the right mental space to be around other students. I had a mental breakdown in my class and asked to go back to the office away from my peers. The next day, Nicholas was called into the office to talk to a police officer and administrators. He denied everything. He was asked to not approach me at school by the officer and administrators. On January 31st, I went to the Burbank Police Station to have my statement taken by a detective. While I showed evidence of Nicholas admitting to the rape over text message, I was told it was considered a he-said, she-said situation by the detective. Nicholas would stalk and harass me on a daily basis at school and even outside of school. I reported this to my counselor, and she said that they would tell him to not continue that behavior anymore, but he did not stop. I was not getting proper help from BUSD or BPD, so I took the situation to social media. I posted about being raped and how I was still being harassed. The next day at school, I was called into my counselor's office, where I was told not to post or talk at school about what happened to me. I was instead giving the alternative to write down my feelings and destroy the paper when I was done. I was shut down once again by John Mear Middle School. Nicholas was allowed to promote onstage in May 2018 while I failed my classes from not coming to school because I didn't feel safe. I did not promote in eighth grade because of my lack of attendance. There was no action ever taken to protect me from Nicholas Yahaman. Burbank School District and the Burbank Police Department failed me. Till this day, Nicholas stalks me and still tries to contact me. Burbank School District and Burbank Police Department should have protected twelve-year-old me. I am just one of many other children attending or have attended a school in Burbank District who have not been properly helped after reporting their sexual abuse. I demand that BUSD ensures the safety of all students who have to deal with their sexual assaulters at school every day. I deserve to be protected. Instead, I was shut down by my school administrators and silenced to keep from the situation gaining any attention. We need change finally. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Coral Ann Baker, followed by Gisela Gregorian.
President Ferguson, can I jump in? I know this is a very emotional and raw topic. I just want the audience to know that we have represented some Burbank Family Service Agency here. If you would like to speak with someone from Burbank Family Services at any point in this meeting, Lori, if you can, and Chris, if you can wave your hands, Lori and Chris. We can have a room so that if you want to talk, if you want to just talk, this is, we want to hear everyone's testimonial. We know this can trigger other experiences, so please know there's support here tonight.
Go ahead.
Following up with that, I would just like to say before I speak, if anything I say does trigger you, I would request that you leave the room. I do not want you to have to ruin your day. I genuinely wish I could say my school district protects its students. The district I was in from grade six to eleven, but unfortunately, they failed to protect my safety at the ripe age of thirteen. And I was in eighth grade, and they still continue to fail this protection amongst their students to this day and well before me as well. I was thirteen years old when I was first assaulted by a fellow student of the BUSD School District. He initially assaulted me off-campus, and his violent, physical, and emotional harassment continued on and off-campus as well. I miss so much school, my eighth grade and my freshman year, because I was genuinely scared to step foot on campus because of him. I was, he was a thirteen-year-old boy. James Rappatoni planned out and executed, drugging me and sexually assaulting me with his friends, and there were two other of my classmates, Ben Herrera and Hunter Segal. I was thirteen years old, and yet even, I hadn't even had my first kiss yet. I was thirteen years old when my future was stripped away from me due to the trauma he inflicted on me. I am nineteen years old now. I am a former student of the Burbank Unified School District, graduating in class of 2022. I was recently hospitalized due to the fact that everything he had done to me, I am now stuck in a quote-unquote "trauma-based psychosis," according to my doctors. And who protected him? You. The Burbank Unified School District, the Burbank Police Department, protected him over a thirteen-year-old girl. The Burbank Unified School District and their teachers and their admin and their hired campus police officers protected him. I was forced to report him when I was fourteen years old in order to get away from him and to transfer schools. I was forced to make this statement, and I was scared out of my mind that he was going to find out and he was going to find me and that he was going to kill me because he had threatened to in the past. All that you did was send him to another school within the district. We went to Burbank High and John Mear Middle School together, and you transferred him to Mag Park. The only reason he was taken off-campus was because I threatened to quote-unquote "beat him up" because he would continue these acts of abuse that he inflicted on me on and off-campus. He pushed me down the stairs on your campus. He slammed my head into a- He slammed my head into a brick wall on your campus, and he would repeatedly "call me rape whore." And he was protected. And how are you as teachers, admin, and the people who are supposed to protect us, grandparents, uncles, and aunts? How are you as parents looking at these students that you are obligated by law to protect, and you are not doing so? I've said my piece, but I'm here today to speak on behalf of thousands of students who you are obligated by law to protect, that you are currently failing by still allowing these abusers, rapists, predators onto campus. How are you going to sit up there and listen to these stories and not do better? I'm a nineteen-year-old girl, and I would put my life on the line for every single girl back there, and you are not doing that. These kids have been forced to step onto a campus. School is supposed to be a safe place for students, and none of them have felt safe. You are supposed to protect them from these monsters, and you keep excusing it by saying they are also fellow "students," teachers, and admin. They are monsters. If you lay your hands on another person without their consent, you are nothing more than a monster, and you don't deserve the same rights and treatment as innocent people. I care for some of these students as if they were my brothers, sisters, and siblings, and I will no longer tolerate your excuses. You as a district, as human beings, need to check your morals, and you need to do better for these children. My abuser was allowed to walk the stage. My abuser was allowed in the same classes as me, and he was allowed the same graduating rights. I should not have equal rights to James Rapitoni. My abuser, James Rapitoni, was granted his freedom by BUSD and Burbank Police Department after my initial report of him in 2019. Since then, him and his twin brother have now eleven-plus accusations of rape, abuse, and sexual assault. They are multi-offense rapists, and you let them on your campus. You let them hurt eleven other girls. And you did nothing. After my initial report, you had the ability to save the lives of eleven other girls, and that is just known accusations. Those are just known reports. We have no idea the extent of their abuse, and unfortunately, we might never find out. You failed them, and you failed me, and you continue to fail these kids. And I ask you personally in this room, if you think this is acceptable, if you think this is okay, and this kind of mistreatment and this misconduct is allowed, I would ask you to leave. Please stand up and leave if you are in support of the district continuing this type of allowance to these monsters. You need to do better. I'm no longer asking you, and I'm telling you. There needs to be a physical change in how you are running things and how you are responding. I do not want an apology. I'm beyond the point of asking for help from a room full of men and women who have failed me. I'm telling you as a former student that if you don't start doing better in protecting these kids to make sure the school is safe environment from sexual abuse and sexual misconduct, you will watch your district run into the ground. Treat these kids as if they are your own, and I mean absolutely no one deserves the feeling of being unsafe the way I have felt and the way numerous of students before me and after me are currently feeling. I want the best for this district's growth, but if you cannot provide it, I do not be surprised when it starts to fall apart because thankfully, we live in a world where these students are now becoming more confident and comfortable in their voices and utilizing their rights to exercise free speech. They deserve better, and I'm asking you, and I'm telling you, you need to do better. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gisela Gregorian, followed by Wendy French.
Hi.
Good evening.
I find it a little hard to follow. I wasn't even planning to say this part, but I really would like to know how is it that district principals allow children to be questioned by police without their parents present? They're minors. I really would like to know what the policy is and what are we signing off when we sign them up to this district? Because there should be a waiver that we sign off that we're not okay with that, because I'm not. I would need to be called immediately before my child is questioned by any officer of any kind without me present. Now, what I'm here for is, of course, my child, I have two children at Burbank High School, a senior and a freshman. I have one that already graduated a couple of years ago. And I had some precise items that I think could help the situation at the moment. I think Burbank High School should not be open to the public at five o'clock in the morning. It should open after school hours when students are gone. And if it must open at five, then the city needs to pay or provide for that security. Not us, not you. We should reconsider, at least open the discussion to bring back SRS full-time. We should survey students and staff to find out how they really feel about this. Not assume that they're scared, or they want it, or they don't. Survey and find out how they feel about it. There are doors in Building Two at Burbank High School that they should be changed, modified, to walls or seal them in some way? Find out how that can be done? We should reduce the access points at that school. There's just way too many. Add cameras to every site, not just us, every site, and modify it and modernize some software updates. The nighttime vision, the people that can see the nighttime, they see shadows, and they can't even see a face. What's the point of having a camera if they can't recognize who is in that camera? And they need more, a lot more. More funding to hire additional yard supervisors and/or pay teachers. They are willing, teachers and staff, they are willing to walk during lunch, before school, after school, bathrooms, hallways. Vaping had gone down a lot when they did that. And now it's an everyday thing, all-day thing. Nobody cares. Not that you don't care, but the kids don't care because nobody's monitoring. So we've had students jump in the pool fence to come into school. It needs to be taller. Not saying barbed wire, we don't want a prison, but it needs to be taller. Cover the fence with wire mesh to avoid food deliveries. They really don't care that it's not allowed to have Uber Eats or whatever. They don't listen. We don't know what's in those bags, what can be brought in, so cover the fence in some way. And I know you've talked about changing to scanners to scan IDs, but I think we need to do more because they're fake IDs. Kids make these IDs to get the lunch thing. Just wait till you're a junior and study so you have the good grades. But I think juniors and seniors should have a color. Sophomores and freshmen should have another predominant color, so then the yard supervisors could spot them quickly. Hey, you're not allowed to go out. You are. And the years, maybe the photo on one side or the other for certain grade levels, so they can get out. It should not be that easy to make an ID for a school. And then clearly communicate the consequences for students and adults alike. Adults should be wearing their badge at school because kids should be able to spot them that that adult does not belong there. And the consequences should be clearly communicated. My child did not know that they had lunch detention or forgetting his ID. I'm like, really? It's March. No, I didn't know. Okay, well, you should have been told like a long time ago. And then by now, you should just get the detention. It shouldn't be a warning anymore. So they should be told, an announcement, a PA announcement of some sorts, so that they can hopefully stay safe. It's in your hands, and you have us parents to back you. But the first hand is yours.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Wendy French, followed by Linda Rossop.
Hi. Thank you so much, and thanks, Gisela, for those great practical solutions. I appreciate that. My name is Wendy French. I'm a business owner in Burbank. We moved to Burbank for the schools. I'm a parent of an ILA Burbank High graduate, and I also have a daughter who is a junior at Burbank High School. In November 2021, I came here and I addressed the board and informed you of some of the safety concerns that I had at Burbank High. And here I am again, coming before you, and I'm concerned about my daughter's safety at Burbank High. I'm really frustrated. I'm an accountant, it's tax season, I don't want to be here. I'm really busy. I could be making a lot more money somewhere else. But I feel like I needed to come and address the board, but I'm really not hopeful at this point that any change is going to happen. That's really frustrating for somebody who is so invested in Burbank. On March sixth, a criminal walked into my child's dance classroom. He circled the classroom weaving in and out of the dancers, and thankfully, he left the classroom after being addressed by the teacher. My mind has been swirling since then with the thoughts about that day. What if my student had gone into the bathroom that morning? What if the criminal had a weapon? I can't even think or sleep thinking about all the what-ifs. I'm here to present solutions. It exposed the school's safety weakness. The reality is, we have three gates that on campus. The main entrance on Third Street, the faculty lot in Glen Oaks, and the parking garage gate. My child uses all three of these gates, but mainly uses a parking garage. No one's checking IDs. My daughter will tell you, she hates pulling out her ID. It's hard to get out of her phone case. She'll text me that day, I need a new phone case. If she had to check her ID that day, I can tell you she's texted me that less than five times this year. She did text me every day last week. Anyone who looks like a student could easily slip on campus at 8:30 a.m. when all the students are arriving on campus or when they're returning from lunch. That's our weak point. And with over 2,000 students, I can completely understand why they're not checking IDs. There isn't enough staff to properly validate each ID. We need more yard aides or security who can be helping check with IDs at 8:30 a.m. when students arrive and at lunchtime. Furthermore, I'd love to see some sort of scanning system, smart badges that could be scanned in and it logs who is on campus and who isn't. Do we have any idea how many people are on campus and who is on campus at any given moment at Burbank High? In case of an emergency, how would we know how many students are actually there? I worked for Deloitte, a large accounting firm, and on September 11, 2001, we realized that our company had a major flaw. We didn't know how many people were in our buildings, and we didn't know how many people were in our building that resided right across from the street from the World Trade Center. Then that building was subsequently swallowed up by falling debris from the collapsing tower. Within weeks, we had badges that we used to scan ourselves in and out of the building so that we could have a proper head count in an emergency. They were not something that could be easily replicated. They had microchips in them, they still use them to this day. Additionally, have you tried to call over to Burbank High this year? No one's answering the phone. So when I had an emergency pop-up and I needed to get my daughter out of school, there was nobody to answer the phone call to try to help me figure out how to get my daughter out of campus. I just called my daughter directly in class to be able to try to figure and have her help me troubleshoot how to get her out of the school. I was hoping to have her there at the office at that time so that I could save time, but that didn't work because there wasn't anyone answering the phone. I have several friends who've also tried to call, and I have tried to call multiple times this week. No one's answering the phone. I know that your next thought is, hey, these are all great ideas, Wendy, but we don't have the funds. So I'd like to read out my same sentiment from November of 2021. It's not just a money problem that Burbank USD has, we have a management problem. We need to trim the fat and get rid of those people who are not doing their jobs effectively. I'm sure if we opened it up to the community to be able to report the people who they feel like have not been doing their jobs, who are not returning emails, returning phone calls, or addressing situations that have been brought up, I'm sure people would be happy to give you a list of those people. You can contact me privately, and I'm happy to provide that, or I can do it publicly, that's fine. In my business, I would never allow somebody who was not returning phone calls or emails to be able to continue under my employment. They would not receive a paycheck from me. If you're not performing, you shouldn't be collecting a paycheck. It is simple as that, that's how the world works. Additionally, we need to stop being reactive as a district. We know that they aren't checking IDs over at the school, but in order for that to be reinstated, three girls had to be assaulted. If we're proactive, we can make changes that prevent lawsuits, which would also save money, and furthermore, we'd be preventing a tragedy. We need to avoid and be more proactive in this school district instead of being reactive. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Rossop, followed by Everhuerta.
Good evening. Members of the school board, my name is Linda Rossop, and I'm a Burbank resident. I've taken the time to review the district's public statements related to the sexual assault that took place on March sixth at Burbank High School. While I appreciate the district sharing this information, the manner in which it was presented to the public leads us to believe this was the first time these safety reviews took place and procedures initiated. This is surprising to me, since California Education Code Section 32280 requires these safety reviews to take place yearly on each campus. Are we to believe that these mandated safety reviews did not take place at Burbank High prior to the assaults? And if so, why didn't they? Over the last year, the district has become aware of sexual assaults taking place on campuses. The assaults are committed, one, an intruder easily gaining access to an unsecured campus; two, allegations of students sexually assaulting other students; and three, at least one public allegation of a John Burroughs High School teacher sexually assaulting a student. What we hear from the district are rehearsed responses that do absolutely nothing to suggest your commitment, understanding, or ability to take necessary preventative steps, thoroughly investigate such allegations, or effectively protect our children. It took the district over a year to investigate an allegation of a sexual assault by a ninth-grade English teacher at John Burroughs High School. The result of the investigation was the teacher being put back into the classroom and leading parents and students to believe that he was exonerated. Last fall, a lawsuit was filed, and the district and the teacher were publicly named as defendants. At that point, the teacher was removed from the classroom. My question is, was there new information in the lawsuit that prompted the teacher's removal from the classroom? If the answer is yes, my follow-up question is, why didn't you discover this information in your year-long investigation? If the answer is no, that the lawsuit did not reveal new information, why then was the teacher removed from the classroom? I'm guessing your answer will be that since his name was made public in the lawsuit, his presence on campus would be disruptive and a distraction. As a parent, having raised children in the district, I think it's naive to believe that parents and students didn't already know the identity of the teacher and the allegations against him. His presence on campus was already a distraction and made many, many students uncomfortable. Finally, we have heard from the district over the last year a response of, "We take this seriously and will conduct a thorough investigation." Obviously, look around this room, we all take this seriously. Speaking for myself, and I believe many parents and students in this room and the Burbank community, we have lost confidence that the district is capable of conducting any investigation. How is it that the events leading up to three students being sexually assaulted in a bathroom at Burbank High took you less than a week to conclude? Any thorough investigation into how this intruder gained access to the campus would include a top-to-bottom review of existing policies and procedures designed to have stopped this predator from gaining access? It is patronizing to the victims of this crime, as well as to the community, to say that the investigation was concluded in a few days and was basically the same review that should have been conducted before the assaults happened. We expect you to be proactive and advocates for campus safety. The district's actions clearly contradict a proactive advocacy and demonstrate a reactive-after-the-fact mindset. You absolutely must do better. Our students, the students in this room demand it. As parents, we demand it, and the community demands it.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Everhuerta, followed by Hannah Seidner. Good evening, Mr. Huerta.
Good evening, President Ferguson, Vice President Weisberg, school board members, Superintendent Hill, district staff, and Burbank community. It's just like we saw each other last night. I come here tonight to speak again of what I talked about in my school board report. And to also thank the Burbank community that is coming out tonight, our students, parents, and just the amazing community members. I come to speak to raise awareness of this issue, but to also help find solutions, which I think having this type of discussion and a special meeting on this type of topic will help guide us to. As for a while in my advocacy within the district, I think having representation of the youth matters. As a board, we have failed our students. Seeing that we allowed an intruder on a campus, which should have never happened, procedures that have taken, we have failed. We have failed our students. Our students don't trust us now. Talking with various students at Burrows, also at Burbank, it's truly concerning. I come here to highlight also the concerns from the other school board representatives, Sarah Nae Tripotosian, who unfortunately couldn't make it tonight. But also just like to reiterate her points that she made last night, such as both campuses are allowed and are open to the public due to the Joint of Use of Facilities Agreement that we have with the city of Burbank. Like Sarah Nae said last night and myself agreeing, you know, our campuses are open at 5:00 in the morning. And I didn't know that, actually. I realized that at Burrows, when we had our senior sunrise, it was 5:00 in the morning, it was pitch black. I was moving tables and I felt, I heard somebody walking, pitch black on the football field. And it was a jogger and I was like, oh. That is concerning, a jogger, it is 5:00 in the morning and we're setting up for a school event for our seniors. And that could have been anybody. And you can't even see, pitch black on our football fields at that hour. Also, wanting to address having nighttime patrols on our campuses. As part of ASB, I serve as the ASB president at John Burrows High School. I've stayed after school for long periods of time. And you know, we've had the fire alarms pulled when we've been setting up for homecoming night. And what was really shocking to me is that there's only one campus supervisor on the Burrows campus. So I'm thinking maybe is that the same at Burbank High if there's one campus supervisor at night there? Because when the fire alarm was pulled, you know, we had firefighters, police officers arrived to the campus and we saw our ASB advisor was with us, the tech crew advisor was with her students. And our campus supervisor, which was just one person, was out in front talking with our firefighters, the police to address the situation, which I think, you know, one person for that responsibility to walk around our campuses, check that everything is closed, that's really concerning. So one solution that I really think is important is maybe having advisory council. I think it's time that we have a youth advisory council now. Who knows the ways, ins and outs, the possibilities of having our students, who know students, you know? Like, one of the speakers raised a concern, students know how to make fake IDs. Students know how to have their lunch passes when they go out. They know how to fake the sticker, get a sticker from someone else's, which was just really concerning. Last year at Burrows, before, this year we did stickers, they printed out a whole different ID for the lunch passes that you would use to show, to prove that you actually had a lunch pass. And this year, it's just a sticker. And I've heard in the hallways while I'm walking down, oh, let me see your sticker and let me make a copy out of it. You know, it happens and it's really concerning. So I think, you know, a youth advisory council would be really beneficial. A youth advisory council would give the opportunity for more student input. Students are our main priority as a school district, to hear their concerns, to hear the issues that they have. Obviously, such a shame that due to this incident, you know, it's raised to this, to the standard of seeing what occurred. So I think working together with that would give an opportunity for more student participation, more student input, help find solutions and, you know, really have students involved in the process of helping make decisions and see how decision-making works. Because I think many students who are showing up and are being aware of the district don't know how it really works. They don't, they don't watch school board meetings, they don't attend school board meetings every other Thursday. So I think it'd be really beneficial to have that. As well, as Sarah Nae mentioned last night, security cameras at both campuses. At Burbank High, like she mentioned, Burbank High was not built at a time to be able to have security cameras. And as well, at Burrows, the same situation last year. Our principal was giving a tour and he pulled me aside and was like, we're looking for investors to have a new security system in place for camera. So that's all from me and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hannah Seidner, followed by Bjorn Bacon.
First, I want to read the findings of fact on the investigation report done by a non-biased investigator named Karen Bell. And this was admitted into evidence later for my trial. On April 27th, 2018, respondent, my abuser, sexually assaulted complainant in Building 2 at BHS during the passing period between lunch and fifth period. When complainant tried to avoid having sex with respondent by hugging respondent, he threw her off stating, "I'm horny, turn around." She told him to not do this right now and she said she needed to go to class. He grabbed her arm and waist and she pushed him away. She began crying and respondent paused for up to 30 seconds while complainant covered her face from crying. Respondent grabbed her again and said, "This will be quick, I promise." She said no, but respondent made no verbal response. Respondent pushed complainant's body so that she was face down on the stairs, removed her jeans partially, covered her mouth with his hand and held her down with his arm. He inserted his fingers into her vagina and then his penis. Complainant did not consent to the sexual activity. This happened to me every single day for over a year and a half. The other times that he raped me, which was almost daily, sometimes multiple times a day, he queersed me into sexual intercourse and I never consented. During this time, I was 14 years old and my abuser was my first sexual relationship. When I would refuse sex during school, he would visibly get upset, including things like yelling at me, turning away from me, acting cold, which was quickly followed by him trying to queers me again. There were many times where he would physically grab my arm and drag me into the second building at Burbank High, which was not properly supervised by the campus supervisors. He would then proceed to queers me more and after a few minutes of him acting angry with me, he would rape me. I also want to mention that the supervisors who knew what was happening were Janelle Carrasco and Kimberly Johnson. These supervisors knew exactly what was going on because there were many times where they caught us in the second building, stairs and elevator. This is referred to in the witness statements on November 27th, 2017, administrators addressed both students individually about missing class during third period and engaging in inappropriate activity. And then December 11th, 2017, both students received a one-day in-house suspension after having been found in Building 2 during lunch after being told to stay out. After I reported this specific assault on April 27th, I had a trial and was given a horrible lawyer who was extremely passive and unhelpful. And then a small part of the credibility statements by Karen Bell are as follows. Complainant, which is me. "The information provided by complainant is credible. She has been consistent in describing the encounter with respondent across multiple occasions. The details she included in her diary entry on July 31st, 2018, as well as what she told Brightman in 2019 and Dally in 2020 are similar in all material respects to what she provided during this investigation. She has also provided information during this investigation that could be embarrassing and/or undermine her claims, such as her diary entries, which adds to her credibility. Complainant's narrative is not only plausible, but has details that provide a ring of truth." And this is respondent, his name is Joshua Palacios. "Respondent's version of the events is less than credible. He has not been consistent in the information he has provided. In addition, some of the information he has provided is not plausible. First, it should be noted that respondent has made some admissions against his interest, though he does not seem to understand they are against his interest because he does not fully understand the nature of consent that is given freely, voluntarily, without coercion." At this point, my justice was left up to the panel, which was four to five BUSD administrators who would decide if he's guilty and should be expelled from the district. I was told after the trial that I was not allowed to know what the panel decided, even after being re-traumatized throughout the entire process. John Paramo was the Title IX Coordinator and he should never step foot in a classroom again. I think the worst thing is that so many girls and women remember his name, John Paramo. And I can guarantee that he does not remember mine. My name is Hannah Seidner and I'm 19.
Our our next speaker is Bjorn Bacon, followed by Sabrina Feldman.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bjorn Bacon. I am currently not a student at Burbank Unified School District, but I once was a part of it. I went to Stevenson Elementary School and was also at Jordan Middle School, now known as Dolores Huerta. I'm currently at Notre Dame High School and I am the BSU president, or Black Student Union, at the school. And after hearing these harmful stories, I am distraught by the lack of protection for young women and children. I do not hear these activities at my school, not to sound boastful, but these young women and children should not have to pay to go to a private school to have the basic human right of protection at school. School is a place to learn and not be fair to the possibility that you could be assaulted and nothing is done. You have more access and resources to protect students more than most Los Angeles Unified School Districts, and I'm not seeing any results. There has been a lacking of a crucial responsibility to protect your students from other students and adults on the campus. There is a great injustice when nothing is done. We have seen it in our history countless times. I've heard stories from people who have had issues relating to sexual misconduct and harassment more from 10 years ago till today. Now let's say these people who are accused are innocent, which I do not think at all. I feel like these men should be held accountable. But if the case that they were, nothing is being done to properly enforce justice for either party. I am so grateful and proud of these women who got to come up here and speak their truth about these issues. But if they were doing something wrong, they should be held accountable from the jump. There needs to be a chaperone for every guest that enters schools. There's no way that any adult should be able to roam freely amongst children. Shame on all the faculty members that failed to protect the survivors and failed to report. And failed to report this is against the California Education Code 49090. John Paramo needs to be held accountable and be better at his job. Protect the students, protect my peers, and protect the future of Burbank Unified School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sabrina Feldman, followed by Sharice. Legan?
My name is Sabrina Feldman. I'm a former student. I graduated in 2018. I played basketball for Burbank, so I really, you know, was, I loved the school, loved everything about it. So I'll just start off by reading it and then, "On September 4th, 2018, three months before the 2018-2019 season was scheduled to begin, Michael Bertram, the former principal of Burbank High School, had announced that a coach was stepping down noting health concerns and a new position. On August 27th, 2018, once I was already an alumni, I had received the call from Michael Bertram. He told me he had asked a student for my phone number. He wanted to know about the talks surrounding a coach and relationships. He then gave me his personal phone number and said, 'Text me if I had or if I've remembered any information.'" "The principal had allegedly become aware of or had in his possession an inappropriate photo of the coach that was circulating around the school. This occurred approximately one week before the announcement of the coach stepping down. The Burbank High School principal was aware of the alleged misconduct, as he called me in hopes of furthering his own investigation. The school and district were allegedly failed to be notified of any sort of this occurrence and subsequently there was no investigation into this matter. The coach had continued to maintain the position to the, the new position she was given to this day. Given the lack of investigation or knowledge of this occurrence and non-compliance to protocol, the board cannot ensure that parents, cannot ensure to parents the safety of their children until a thorough investigation is conducted. The board needs to appoint a body separate from the district to investigate all of these claims thoroughly. And instead of making another statement, I asked that John Paramo step down from the position of the Title IX Director." I spent I, I remember receiving the image when I was a senior in high school, right before the season was scheduled to begin. And I just remember being terrified that this coach would just come and try to kill me because I knew of this. And I just, I was starting my first day of college and then I received a call from my former principal. So I don't know what happened. I don't know why there is a photo like this existing. I don't know how we as students got it and I don't want to make any assumptions, but the board had failed in either the school, the board, there is nobody to hold accountable. I'm just, it's just how do we know that things will get solved? How do we know, like, when the just, I love the school, that happened and it just fully changed my opinion and I just don't believe that this person should still be walking around. I walk, I go to, my brother is still a student at Burbank. And I go to his water polo games and I see him there. And it's, yeah, thank you.
Our next speaker is Sharice. Is it, hey? Not here? Okay, one more just in case, Sharice? Okay, we'll move on. Ani Chaglossian. Come forward. Our next speaker is Alicia Smiles.
Hi, my name is Ani Chaglossian. I'm a high school senior and I was born and raised here in Burbank, California. I don't go to a school in BUSD, but I first started advocating for change within BUSD after I heard about Brooke's story at John Burrows High School in the beginning of this school year. JBHS students worked tirelessly to get justice for the eight students who alleged that a fellow student had essayed them, but to no avail. He continues to attend the school. For years, I was sexually abused on a daily basis by someone who was supposed to educate me. He had taken photos of me that he shared on the internet. So when I heard about how students were alleging that their teacher Rex Bullington had repeatedly molested and taken explicit photos of them and that he was still teaching at JBHS, I was horrified. BUSD allegedly knew since the early 2000s that Rex Bullington had been grooming male students. Countless young boys have come forward regarding their stories and you continue to ignore them. How can you allow this monster to return to teaching today? After my sexual abuse, I created an organization committed to strengthening Title IX and advocating for those who are often overlooked in the justice system. Following the events on Monday, I posted on my social media account, Protect Kids Not Abusers, to bring awareness regarding the situation. Since then, I've been posting every day and over 20,000 people have saw our post regarding victim stories. I want to thank everyone who started organizing with students to demand change. I was flooded with hundreds of messages from students and community members expressing stories and concerns regarding how BUSD deals with sexual misconduct reports. We are past the time of giving statements. Stop saying that you collectively share a deep concern for the safety and welfare of students while students are here today sharing how this couldn't be further from the truth. There are almost 75 students who have come forward this week and created written impact statements on how school administrators and BUSD mishandle their reports of sexual misconduct. When I do something wrong at work, I get fired. Yet John Paramo continues to get paid $164,000 without benefits, only to continue to fail students over and over again. These students live within my community and suffer every day while you do nothing. These students deserve a commitment to change, not a statement. The first step towards ensuring student safety and showing change starts with the resignation of current Title IX Coordinator John Paramo and his Assistant Chairon Casio. Promptly following a definitive statement regarding the employment of Rex Bullington with a promise that he never steps into a classroom full of students again, not a six-month leave. Without these imperative first steps, I firmly believe that progress can simply not be made in this space. I look forward to seeing real change within BUSD.
Our next speaker is Alicia Smiles, followed by Lisa Durell.
Before I begin, you sir, I wanted to ask, do you have any children or grandchildren that are in Burbank High School right now?
Unfortunately, I need you to address the board.
Okay, I'll address you. So I was just curious because, you know, if he has children, where are they? Why aren't they here? Why aren't they the ones sharing their experiences? And also, how dare he say that the police should be the ones to fix this problem when it was my boyfriend that took down the intruder? And I have my own experience with the fucking pigs. They, I was beat by I was beat by my ex in Mar- uh, June. And I ran to a neighbor for help. They called nine-one-one and the police arrested me and put me in jail for a full week, a full seven days. I never even was sent to court, like, then that's the people that this person wants to be responsible? And apparently, that's who you people want as well, uh, which is evidenced by them even being in the room right now. There are men with guns, as there's girls trying to share their trauma, trying to heal. And there's that intimidation in the room right behind them? That's not okay. And if you guys want to make it right, I, I don't want anybody in this room to be lost in the spectacle of what's happening here. We are not sharing these experiences to absolve you of your sins. Like, we're not going to share this and then you guys are good people now. No, you got to make it right. I say you should tell the police in this room to leave right now. I think that is your first duty to heal in your community.
Our next speaker is Lur- uh, Lisa Durell, or Durette? Excuse me. Durell, sorry. Thank you. Followed by Marlee Tyler.
Good evening and thank you. Um, uh, I just want to say that first and. First and foremost, I'm a little disturbed at hearing, I want to thank the young women that have come up and spoken tonight. I am very upset and disturbed at hearing this obvious pattern that has continued on within Burbank Unified School District. I'll leave it there. My goal in coming forward this evening was to talk to you about some things that you could do with these critical events that you have that you need to manage right now. And there are some things that you can do that are free. First and foremost, we should have a, right now, today, you guys should be implementing in all the schools, a consent class to teach young men how to wait for a young woman to consent. That is easy, that is free, okay? Um, I'd like to talk about the fact that, you know, I don't know if you guys have had a security assessment, a vulnerability assessment yet, but that is something that you can do. You can ask for a request for proposal from security companies. You can then take those vulnerability assessments, and I keep hearing about building number two. That's been going on for years. What are you guys doing about that? But your vulnerability assessment test, you can take that information and fill out a form on Cal- OES, which is California Office of Emergency Management. Currently, there is a grant and funding available for non. Sorry, I'll take a second. Um, there is a grant that is available for you guys because you are in for a not-for-profit. You can use those funds for things like badging access systems. Every single student can wear a lanyard with a badge and they can be color-coded. I love that idea. That is not something that someone can create a fake ID around. That badging system can be worn by current students as well as faculty and staff and including any kind of Burbank Unified School District employee. And only those badges can go in and out of those buildings. I agree, we should not be turning our children's schools into prisons, but there are things. It is twenty twenty-three and the fact that you guys don't have some of these things in place is unacceptable and is unexcusable. And there are grant and funding that you can get today to do these things. So please, get some requests for proposals from some security firms. They will write the worksheet up for you. It is free. You can put that in and you can pay for all of these things, including the additional staff that these folks are asking you for. I'd like to also understand where is the district's concern with the fact that we're dealing with violence? Sexual assault is violence being perpetrated on our children and you guys are continuing to let this happen and there's obviously a pattern. I didn't quite understand the magnitude of the pattern until coming here this evening. Um, I'd like to also, I, it's a sidestep, but I would like to also understand what your advocacy is with other city officials as well as the police department in terms of the fact that we have not one, not two, not three, but seventeen gun shops and gun ranges within a three-mile district of our schools. And I'd like to know what you guys are doing about that to get those out of here. Because we probably obviously also have a mental health challenge for our young men and women in these schools. And I, unfortunately, that might be your next critical event that you're managing. So let's take some accountability there and let's get somebody, let's get some advocacy going within the city. Um, lastly, I'd like to really understand a couple of things. Um, Matt Chambers recently resigned a few days ago. And if I look back, it looks like in the last year, you've had nine principals that have resigned or quit and maybe that number is incorrect, but I'd like to understand why is that? Is that because they're not getting paid enough? Are you guys actually finally cleaning house? What is really going on in that situation? Um, I'd also like to understand, you have this new WeTip? Great, wonderful, this anonymous tipping line, but I'd like to understand who receives them and how they're processed. And how the person that's actually anonymously putting in information is going to get something back? Because there is technology that allows you to have two-way communication. So let's make sure that WeTip can actually do that for those people. So, um, I want to say that, you know, I really appreciate you guys listening to everyone this evening, but I'm really curious that tonight, before you leave, and I want to thank the people that I've been watching, taking notes. I'm a little disappointed that some people aren't and/or texting while, while young women are up here speaking. That's a little disappointing. So I'd like to know by the time we all leave tonight, what is your plan? Because I've given you a lot of free things you can do right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marlee Tyler, followed by Liliana Landa. Or Levita, sorry. Handwriting in bed. Marlee?
Hello, yeah.
Hi there.
Hello, my name is Marlee Tyler. I'm currently a senior. I do ILA, but I used to go to John Burrows High School this semester, or this year. Um, so at the beginning of the school year, I decided to make a club called the Divine Feminine um, for victims of sexual violence to be able to speak about their story without being silenced. And so throughout this whole year, I've heard a lot of people tell me about their sexual assault, sexual harassment, and how the district has failed them. Um, in one particular case, um, sorry, it's a lot. Uh, in one particular case, uh, the student, uh, he.
No, take your time.
The student, she told, uh, everything's alleged, just, I'm just saying that because last time we were told that we can't say names because everything's alleged, but, um, just because it's alleged doesn't mean that we can, we are true. Um, she told Ms. Carlton about her sexual assault, uh, with the male student on campus. Um, she did not hear anything following up from Ms. Carlton, even though she said that she would contact the Burbank Police Department and get back to her with a response. That never happened. So we started protesting outside of the school and, um, we received attention from the, our staff. Um, but it seems that the only thing that they were focusing on was his name being on a poster and him, or and them protecting his identity instead of asking the victims, um, about what happened to them. And then we posted a TikTok, got a lot of attention and then finally the district noticed us and wanted to figure out what was going on. Um, you guys sent out an email to the parents saying that you were doing a thorough investigation, which wasn't true. Um, then another incident was Rex Bullington. He was my senior, or my, sorry, he was my, uh, English teacher this year and a lot of students were complaining because, uh, he had a lot of sexual.
Okay.
Sorry.
Get at your pace.
Do you want, do you want somebody to sit with you? Good friend?
She's coming.
Yeah, so I have social anxiety, but I just.
Me too.
Talking, um, is more important than my comfort, but, um, Rex Bullington, um, you guys sent an email saying that no one has complained that year, which wasn't true because people in my own classroom complained about him teaching. And then with the, uh, incident in Burbank, allowing the man to be on campus, but to me, I'm just a witness in all of this. I see that students on our campus are rapists and abusers. We can't trust our teachers either and we can't trust you guys to not allow random people to come on campus. It's not safe, not safe. We're not protected from other students. We're not protected from the teachers and we're not protected from outsiders either. And I'm just wondering why you guys haven't acknowledged your faults? Because it seems like anytime anything happens, you guys may not be aware that it's that you care and that you're doing a thorough investigation, which isn't true. Y'all know it's true because there wouldn't be this many people coming to you guys and telling their stories about what's happened, what's happened to them. And this is only just a handful. I know more people that have their own complaints against you guys. And there's probably way more that you don't know about. So I'm just wondering why you guys haven't apologized or even taken responsibility? Because according to the California Department of Education, it is your guys' duty to ensure that this campus is safe, that everyone feels safe. So I'm just wondering why? Can the person apologize and acknowledge?
Our next speaker is Liliana Landa, Olivia, Landa. Thank you very much. Followed by Geneva Gisela. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me in. Good evening, everyone. I'm here because I have some concerns about my son's safety. But first of all, I'm going to read something that, uh, I think concerns every part in here. And. It says, uh, "A day started with me walking to my PE class. I walked in the locker room, ready to change, uh, my clothes, went, uh, to put my backpack away when people started throwing balls everywhere. One landed on me, so I threw it back and my, and Mr. Evans saw me and rushed towards me, pinned me, pushed me against the wall, saying that while I was doing that, I was shocked. So I said, I'm sorry, it was my bad. And then he started yelling at me, kicking me out of the locker room and everybody was, all my, my friends were looking at me with big eyes and they, and he just threw me away. That happens on January twenty-sixth. This kid is my son. He's not his PE teacher. He was just checking the locker room. The concern here for me and my ex-husband is that we talked to the principal. My son goes to Luther Middle School. He's in eighth grade. I sent a letter to every one of you. We talked to the principal. He didn't know anything about it. And he says that he's going to report this. Since that day until today, I haven't heard a word. So I was listening to a business woman who said that in a month, you haven't heard anything to fire. I was listening to the kids, that they are raising their voices, claiming for help and not me. When I chose Burbank as my district school, I thought it was a small community, small board. I'm going to be always protected when I'm working and my son is going to be protected. And it's amazing that that teacher is still working. I told the principal that my son didn't want to go to the school the next day. This teacher is six feet. My son is five-two. When he pushed him against the wall, he just lifted up and pushed him. He yelled. I'm a teacher too. I know sometimes kids can drive you crazy, but nothing justified that, do that, just that power. So we're talking about protecting our kids from outsiders. What about insiders? You know, more than fifty kids saw him pushing him. And nobody do anything until now, until today. That's why I'm here today. Because nobody, we are role models. The teachers are our role model. If another kid see that, pushing another kid, what do you think he's learning? To be a bully, to be an abuser? And the school just is not doing anything. I have the names of the people that I wrote that letter that night. I was very concerned and I don't have any answer until now. I don't know how you're going to answer that today. I've been told that the principal, uh, as a mandatory report, gives his report to child abuse. I was about to go and go to the police station and report this, and this teacher as an abuser. But I've been told that if there is no bruises, nothing happened. What are you waiting for? Blood? It's not even just my word that, the word of my son that it's worth it to be. Not even, I mean, this teacher doesn't have any punishment, nothing. They haven't take any disciplinary action. He was with a headache next day. He was very concerned. And then he's going to this teenager age that he needs to show power maybe? He doesn't, he say, no, mom, don't go, don't talk because my friends are going to, he's like that. So I talked to the, the principal. Monday, I talked to the principal.
Please wrap up your comments.
Yeah, he said the same thing. So what I'm going to do? Where do I need to go to be?
We will respond to them, so thank you very, very much. Our next speaker is Geneva Gisela, followed by Hesukli.
I'm Geneva Gisela. I'm a senior at John Burrows High School. Thank you for letting me speak in front of you tonight. My main point that I want to address is safety at these schools or the lack thereof, really. Um, students attend school for seven hours a day and the bare minimum is to feel safe and be safe at school. We, the bare minimum is to be provided a safe learning, uh, environment. We should not, we should not be worried about, hey, am I going to need to worry about being assaulted today? Am I going to need to worry about having to learn how to protect myself just for that when I'm here to learn? I no longer feel safe at the school because of the lack of safety at these schools. His point, within my four years of being in high school, I bear witness to a student who is alleged of rape, who I see every day, who has assaulted multiple students, two of which being my personal friends, and a known English teacher at my school who has been relieved of his duties because of the fact that he was arrested and indicted on sex, behavior of sexual assault against a minor. And I'm sure that you're all aware of the Burbank High incident and if you're not, you should be. A man was allowed to walk in from off the street through an unlocked gate, which remained unlocked days after the incident. Per report, per report of students at Burbank High, it hasn't been locked since then. I don't really know because we don't get much transparency on these issues and that in itself is a huge issue. Um, keep in mind, this all happened in broad daylight. This wasn't even like he snuck on campus at night or something, nothing. You would think that one of the few places that this would occur is at school and that's where you stand wrong. Because for years, this school district, and I can't speak for Burbank, but as far as John Burrows goes, you know, not only have they neglected these reports of sexual assault, rape and harassment, but they've also allowed these abusers to stay in these environments despite knowing about what these people have done, regardless of their position, i.e. staff, teachers and students. Where's the accountability? While I understand that there is a process that must occur, there is a difference between having these processes take the time that they need and ignoring these issues completely and these cases completely. This is my last year in high school. This is my last year in high school and I'm gonna be extremely disheartened and rather sickened if I see five, ten years down the line that these incidents are still persisting with little to no action being taken, especially for issues as major as this. All of you, including school staff, are mandated reporters. Your, our expectation of you and your job is to keep our school safe and make this a safe environment for everyone. None of these people should still be here. I'm going to be extremely, and I am extremely disheartened by all of this. Because this still happens. I still see these people every day at school. I, the, the kids are not okay. We deserve to feel and be safe. These schools need to be safe. This needs to be fixed now. This is a huge issue. Protect kids, not abusers.
Our next speaker is Hesuk Lee, followed by Noel Mason.
Hello, my name is Hesuk Lee. I'm a current tenth grade student at Burbank High School. And in regards to the last speaker, I can speak for Burbank High School students. Last week's incident, we didn't get a response until two days later over email. I don't remember that email saying, we're sorry that someone came on to our school. We're sorry for failing security. It said, we care and we're trying to fix it. I have not seen any trying to fix it over the past week since the incident. Um, two days ago on Wednesday, I sent out over social media and word of mouth a survey asking students at BUSD to detail their experiences regarding Title IX and sexual violence and just gender-based discrimination. And I think you would like to hear some of the responses. There were, there are currently forty-five responses. Of forty-five responses, forty-four point two percent had experienced some form of gender-based discrimination from another student, either ones that they did not know or personally knew. Eighteen point six percent had experienced some form of gender-based discrimination from teacher or school staff. Twenty-five percent had experienced gender-based discrimination in women's, men's, mixed gender and gender-neutral sports. One hundred percent of respondents said that they personally knew or had experienced gender-based discrimination or sexual violence from anyone within BUSD. Nobody said that they did not know. There were, of forty-five responses, at least one hundred fifty separate accounts from someone's friends, someone's classmate, said that they knew someone who was discriminated against, who was catcalled, groped, assaulted, raped. There are about thirty to forty people in this room. If five times the amount of people in this room came here and told you that you had failed them in protecting who they are and their ability to feel safe at school, would you go and tell yourself, would you do nothing about it? Because that's what you've been doing. Of the forty-five responses, thirty said that they would not be comfortable reporting to district staff or school staff their experience. Of those thirty, twenty said that the reason would be because they had personal experience or they knew someone who had personal experience with BUSD failing to respond to their previous reports, that they believed BUSD would not do anything unless the situation was highly publicized and that they would protect BUSD's image and not the students. Eighty-six, eighty-eight percent of respondents disagreed with this statement. BUSD knows how to comment, combat discrimination based on gender, thirty-eight to five. It is clear here that though BUSD has made efforts very minimally on gender identity and discrimination, they do not know how to fix it. And these are not just numbers. These are real people with real experiences. The respondent, the youngest respondent was eleven years old and she had experienced rape. And nothing was done about it. You are in charge. You are paid here to, we are not being paid to be here. You are, you have a duty to protect BUSD and our students. And I have of, of at least ten respondents who said they had filed an official complaint with the school district. None of them had, were satisfied with the response. All of them said that nothing or very little was done in response to complaints. They were given an insincere or minimal response by the USD staff. Their situation was not resolved, as in if they reported repeated sexual violence, they would complain, they would report. They did not know if the report was received and they would continue to receive sexual violence or be a victim of sexual violence. And that BUSD did not let them know of any action taken on their part for their complaint unless they showed up. And even then, response was not guaranteed. At least half of respondents believed that BUSD's concern in emailing regards the incident at Burbank High School as league was not on maintaining the safety or concerned safety for their students, but on maintaining appearance. Seventy-five percent of respondents believe that BUSD tried to foster an air of inclusive inclusiveness and tried to make it seem like BUSD is inclusive. But I know, personally know, BUSD students who are discriminating, who are being discriminated against daily. I would, I would strongly urge the board here to push for required training for both students and staff on, on gender inclusivity as well as how to deal and report with sexual violence. Please consider the impact you and the action of those who represent BUSD, such as school staff and aides, have on our lives. Thank you and good evening.
Our next speaker is Noel Mason, followed by Odilia Shaw.
Good evening. Um, I re, my name is Noel Mason. I am the secretary of Divine Feminine at John Burrows High School. I am currently a freshman and I really appreciate you guys holding this meeting. But if I'm honest, this should not be, we should not be having to have this meeting because this should have never happened in the first place. The Divine Feminine Club of John Burrows High School has been fighting for this exact reason and nothing has changed. We've met with multiple administrators and they have never gotten back to us after we met with them and spoke with them. And this is not one small occurrence. This is one huge case out of many that you have definitely heard today. And it is horrible to be hearing these that I was, I was just distraught. It was hor, it was disgusting. And we have been fighting for this for so long and we don't trust this district with our safety. And we don't feel safe because of how you guys are handling this. Uh, you have let rapists walk school hallways, harassers and groomers continue to teach at our school and swept sexual assault cases under the rug to keep the school district's reputation. When protesting for John Burrows administrators to take action, Tori Cuseo and Matt Chambers were more distraught of a rapist's name on a poster more than the fact that the assault goes, that the student is a rapist. You don't help students who have been sexually assaulted. And when the assault goes public, you write an email that saying you care and work with a sexually assaulted student side by side. Being assaulted or raped by anyone is a very traumatizing experience. And it feels as if, as if John Burrows and BUSD administrators don't feel the need to do anything about it. We talked with Tori Cuseo in November, in hopes of administrators taking more action when a sexual assault case is reported. But she never got back to us after saying she could see what she can do. We met with John Perremo as well and, and he seemed like he cared, but didn't really help us with what he can do to actually help. Note, Matt Chambers has never had any conversation or discussion with Divine Feminine. He has merely gone to the John Perremo meeting we had and barely said a word to show that he cares. The Burbank Unified School District has to stick to their word and take this seriously. Patrick Nazarian should have never been able to get onto Burbank High School's campus. And you should be taking suggestions right now, such as having sec, having, um, sorry, having just self-defense classes during PE. It's something that is, that seriously has to be done. Instead of running and it's necessary, but self-defense is really needed. And yeah. You, for, for me, you have failed your chance to do better. And I feel that you, that you just, how do I say this? Sorry. That I keep getting these emails that my mom is getting. She forwards them to me. I would really appreciate that the emails from, from Matt Hill and Matt Chambers are also sent to students because I'm only receiving this from my mother. And if she wasn't sending these to me, then I would have no idea what's going on. And I've really had it with everything that's been going on in my first year of high school. I was really hoping to have a better experience, but it's horrible hearing all of these stories and knowing that the district administrators have done nothing to help. And, and he, hearing so many things about drugs, vaping, assault, rape, grooming, groping, all of it is disgusting. And it does not, it should not ever happen at these schools again. And you guys have to do something now. And not just because it's been going public and how it's starting to cause a whole ruckus or whatever. It has to be done now because you care. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Odilia Shaw, followed by Will Robertson.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Odilia Shaw and I am a mother in the B uh USD since two thousand eight. Um, I am a mother, I am a teacher and I'm advocate. I'm a feminist and I'm a volunteer. But out of the brave girls standing at the entrance of this room when I was approaching this evening, so sad. I am very, very sad to hear all these stories of aggression towards them. My son goes to Luther Middle School. He's a sixth grader. I've been in the BUSD since two thousand eight. I just have a son that graduated and he is a freshman in college. I volunteer timeless of hours. I am, um, I was a parent at Roosevelt Elementary School. Timeless, bringing funds to booster groups that don't, doesn't exist right now. ETAs, I mean, hours to cover items that BUSD couldn't afford. I did my part as a mother. What are you doing to protect my child? My friend's child, my neighbor's child. My nephew, Mrs. Landa, that just spoke. When she told me the horrible story that happened in PE, you can imagine as a mother of a Luther sixth grader, I was horrified, horrified. How a teacher can do that? And trust me, if that happened to one of my kids, trust me, you will not, I will not be sending emails. I will be in front of your house with the news cast. I helped Mrs. Landa in every way possible way as an advocate to fight for the child's right. It's not fair that she is still not safe. Can you imagine? My nephew is going to high school next year, high school. What's gonna happen? What is the trust? Why do I have my husband and I to teach my son all of her self-defense classes? Why? Why? To be ready when an attacker in the school ground appears? Why? When a teacher approached to him and tried to raise him by the armpit and put him against the locker? Is this the type of school we have in Burbank? I don't have daughters by birth. But I have lots of daughters by blood, nieces, goddaughters, friends of my sons, neighbors. I am here for them because as a woman, that's my duty for the district to hear my voice. On March eighth, nineteen seventy-eight, the year I was birthed, recognize, the world recognized around the world the importance of women. That's why we celebrate the Women's Day. My question here, and I'm gonna leave it in here. Why are we still marching in front of buildings? Why are we thinking it's okay to abuse, to touch girls without their permission? Why still us are protecting abusers? Why? Why are we still ignoring women? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Will Robertson, followed by Brandon R. I have one more card after this, so if you do have your card still with you, please make sure you turn it in.
Uh, thank you guys for letting us come here and speak tonight. Uh, make this quick as um, I've been in the community for eighteen years. I have three boys who are in the uh school district. My wife is a teacher in the school district as well. And uh, several years ago, before the pandemic, uh, my oldest son uh came to me. He was, he was alarmed and he had said that a teacher was uh putting him in very uncomfortable situations. Uh, as a parent to a boy, I probably thought his imagination was getting the better of him. We let it go. It happened a few more times. Um, there were weird things where the teacher wanted my son to stay after school. It got to a point where then I called for a meeting with him and with the vice principal at Burrows. And we met and we talked and I felt very uncomfortable at the meeting because I ended up saying to him at the end of the meeting, I know what your jam is, I know what you're about. And he looked at me and said, I don't know what you're talking about. I met with the administration after that. I was basically discarded as a, you know, hysterical parent, somebody who was making false accusations. I told my son, hey, man, we did the best we could. Nothing's gonna happen. Um, he's a teacher, you know, we're complaining, big deal. This year, we all know what happened with Mr. Bullington. I know you guys have heard it here tonight as well. I know everybody pretends to care, um, especially when you're the father of a son. People take it a little less seriously. When it happened this year at the school, once again, we said, oh, look, it's happened. We found out there was complaints going back twenty years. I went back to the administration, I'm asking questions. Is this ever gonna be a real thing? Do you guys even care? Do you have kids in the district? Is any, is, does anyone have any compassion? The fact that, that people in positions of power look out more for predators than they do for our kids? And when we try and tell our sons and daughters, hey, people like that, they get caught in the end. They get busted in the end. You wanna know why? Because there's adults that care about you. And it happens year after year after year to boys, to girls. And you guys send out email after email after email. And you say, we sure do care, but you know what? We care more about the predator's rights than the innocent children whose entire lives are being affected because reasons. And that's it. And you never give us good reasons. If you had a kid, and I don't know if you do or not, but if you had a kid, you might think differently. You need to think about predators being protected over children. It's not just something that a bunch of crazy people are saying out there. This is really happening in our district. And you'll go home tonight and you'll forget about what we said. But these kids that deal with this, twenty years from now, like the other person that came forward after twenty years, twenty years from now, these boys and these girls who are touched by these perverts, these groomers and these predators, they won't forget. You will, but they won't. That's it.
Our next, our next speaker is Brandon R., followed by Kai Giptin.
I'm Brendan. I am a freshman at Burrows High School. Um, a newer member of the staff here at BUSD. Uh, I was in a conversation with them earlier this year, uh, halfway through the first semester. And they said that in fifteen-plus years, working in a different district, they had not seen nearly as much controversy in fifteen years as they had seen in half a semester working at Burbank USD. And that has continued to grow. Overdoses, intruders, assault cases going back years and years and years. And once again, all of you pretend to, pretend to care, um, sending out emails saying that you'll put a pin in it, that you're gonna get it this time, but you never do. Every day I go to school for ten-plus hours, wondering if today's the day that me or one of my brothers or my mom or one of my best friends who I've known my entire life will be assaulted by one of our own staff members who could easily get away with it with your principals or an intruder who could walk right onto the Burrows campus by the door that is made out of glass, could easily be taken down or unlocked. And once an intruder does walk on campus, they can simply walk by the campus supervisor. There is absolutely no security at our school. Our doors lock literally from the outside. It would take an intruder minutes to get It would take an intruder minutes to get keys from the office to go into any classroom that they desire. Um, and this is such a problem. Uh, it's just disgusting as well. You have time and time again done nothing. And of the countless cases that I've already heard, I've learned so many new cases of assault on, on our grounds tonight. And it's only getting worse. And you as a board have just done nothing. And I fully believe that each and every one of you will go home tonight and forget about this. Because it's not your district. You don't have kids in these schools. And there is nothing that you are doing, absolutely nothing. You send out apologetic emails and it's disgusting. So.
Our next speaker is Kai Gipti, followed by Linda Beto.
My name's Kai. First of all, this is disgusting. It's hurtful. I have been beat up and sexually assaulted by boys at school. I have gone to my class with cuts, bruises, bleeding, obviously not looking the best. Only for teachers and other peers to tell me that I look like I'm a drug addict and prostitute after I just got sexually assaulted. Imagine how that feels. Just imagine. Do you guys know what it's like to wake up from sleep because you have a dream about things that have happened to you? I'm praying that you guys don't, but like, that is, I don't get sleep at night. I go off of two hours of sleep. I'm in a hospitalization program because of things that have happened to me. It's an awful feeling to know that I'm, I don't feel protected. I am not protected. You guys haven't shown any sign of protection to not just me, but to her and to a bunch of people in this room and hundreds of other kids that are out there right now. I am one too many. She is one too many. Other girls back there are one too many. It's one too many. This has happened too many times. And it's been brought to your guys' attention and we have asked for help and nothing has happened. Rapists, sexual assaulters, groomers are walking free. You guys hate a literal sexual offender and a groomer while he was doing what he was doing. And that is disgusting and that is hurtful. They might be able to get away with it. They might be able to go to sleep at night, but we can't. I will not forget what they have done to me. She will not forget what was done to her. None of us can forget that. You need to understand how hurtful that is and we are asking you to help us. Please just help us. Like that's, it's the bare minimum. We're asking you guys to help us. We need protection because we obviously cannot protect ourselves. We are all a target. And you guys were all targets at one point. Your children are all targets. My future kids are targets. How do you think that makes me feel that I have to worry about what my future kids, like what's gonna happen to them? Is this gonna keep going on? Is anyone gonna do anything? Is anyone gonna say anything? Cause right now it doesn't seem like it. And the only, like, no words can fix what happened. And I honestly think that the best thing that you guys can do is just give us an apology to all of us.
Earlier, our friend Marley spoke and she asked you for an apology and I did not hear a single apology out of any of your mouths. I wanna hear an apology. I did have my time.
Finished her comments and then we said at the beginning that we responded at the end.
We are asking for, we are asking for an apology from all of you.
All public comment is done.
Okay.
Oh, not absolutely, but that's how the move forward.
Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Linda Beto, uh, Linda Beto, excuse me, uh, followed by Deborah Levick Gilmore.
Good afternoon, everyone. Okay. My name is Linda Beto. I work at Burbank High School. All of you know that. I've spoke to you before about the safety of Burbank High School. Um, I'm on the safety committee there and the, what I wanna add now, Ms. French and all the rest of the families that try to call Burbank High School. The reason we can't answer our phones is directly related to three different full-time positions that have been cut from our offices, which require that then maybe six staff that we now have to be spread over their jobs and our own jobs. I'm there from 6:30 in the morning till 4:30 or 5:00 in the afternoon. I can't get to all the phone calls. The ones I can get to, I hear all these complaints about why aren't you answering the phones? On the safety committee, the things that were highlighted at our safety committee meeting, we want our SRO back. You were directly related in removing our SROs from campus. We want them back on campus. A vast majority of kiddos want them back. I know there is a certain percentage that get anxious when they see people with guns, men and women with guns. But a vast majority of us feel protected because of that. Next, we wanna increase the amount of cameras. We want those cameras updated. They need to be night vision cameras and they need to be all over the place. I have cameras on my computer. They won't even load. Two other people have cameras on their computers. They won't even load. We have one person that I know of that can load all those cameras. It's really outdated. We need to limit the public access or because we're part of the city of Burbank, the city of Burbank needs to step up and pay for security over there. Those camp, it's wide open there. We have homeless people that have jumped into the pool. We have homeless people defecating in the stairwells that our camp, uh, that our custodians have to clean up. That's disgusting. They're urinating there all the time. Okay, let me finish this list. Our other teachers and staff, they're willing to cover at lunchtime, in the morning time, nutrition, after school. If you can give them a stipend to do that, they're willing to do that. There's a lot of people there. We need to convert our ID cards to, like we've mentioned, scannable or tapable. You can make them real distinct. These people have, and it's scannable. These people have lunch passes. These people don't. Change the colors of it. Do something. Cause right now they're all the same and they show these little things to us. And we can't even focus on it to see it quickly enough. And the kids can go on Amazon and they can get the machine to make those cards. It's crazy. So, March 2nd, the board voted, well, the vote board put up this piece of paper that says they wanna cut these classified positions. There's over 40 of these positions they wanna cut, including two, four, six, eight, 10 of them that are security. And they say, why? Because there's lack of work. There's a total of 24 hours, I believe I added up correctly. Bring them over to Burbank High School. You need to pay these campus security a living wage and we need to have every single one of them in all these accent points. You were talking about having people scanning these kids at 8 o'clock. Well, I'm there at 6:30. The gates open at 6 o'clock. Everybody's walking on campus. We have a lot of kiddos that come in there because their parents drop them off early and they're just sitting there. Because that's what they have to do, eating breakfast or whatever they're doing. There needs to be people there early in the morning, late in the afternoon. We need all those bases covered. Also, our newest, newest campus security that was just hired. She's the one that was actually this intruder that we had. She's the one that was actually following him and kept track, kept track of him until the police showed up. She also, yesterday she found two adults from Glendale on campus during lunchtime that shouldn't have been there. She's the one that found them and brought them into the office. Also this morning, no, this afternoon, there was another adult with her daughter that don't believe, don't belong in Burbank High School on our campus. She's the one that did it. Today she received this letter that says, notice of recommended layoff. Uh, I'm not kidding you. I made a copy of it. The issue that constantly comes up to us is you don't have enough money. But yet there was money for all the admin to get raises. Our superintendent, this has nothing to do with personality, but our superintendent is paid more than the governor of California who oversees 39 million people. That's insane. You have the money for these raises. You need to put the money into the security. It could all be done now. We could get the cameras now. Every one of these teachers, if they want, they could have Ring cameras on their, on their classrooms. It's, it's cheap technology nowadays. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Deborah Gilmore. And that's the last card I've received at this time in person, for in-person comment.
Okay, this was a hard decision for me to come up here because a lot of these people are my friends and colleagues. And I've worked in the district for 15 years. So I do feel a certain obligation to support my colleagues and, um, my coworkers and such. Um, but I also have a son who was, uh, on the campus at Burbank High during the event that happened last week on March 6th. He's a campus supervisor, so he was also one of the ones who apprehended the intruder. Um, he spent the time with the, uh, intruder, um, scared for what he might have had in his pockets because the young man kept fidgeting with his pockets. He didn't know if he was gonna pull out a weapon or anything like that. He was very, very afraid of that. They kept their distance from him. And then when Burbank PD came, um, he witnessed what he felt was some excessive force on this young man who they had subdued and had gotten him de-escalated. This is something that my son works very hard with to de-escalate people in large groups. And he felt very successful in that, although he was very frightened by what he might have had in his pocket. Let's face it, if someone has a weapon, you can de-escalate all you want. If they've got a weapon, you're in trouble. Um, so he was terrified by this whole experience. It has left him very triggered with issues related to some other things that he's dealing with. So right now he's on a leave of absence because he can't come back to school. And the thing is, he loves his job. He loves those kids. He feels like he's part of a campus that needs him. But he also, like you said, he makes $17 an hour and he's putting his life on the line every day for $17 an hour. That is not comfortable. That doesn't feel good. As his mom, I don't want him doing that. But I also love the district to a fault and to, to my own fault as well. That being said, I also left my job in June, July, and took a job with ILA because I didn't feel safe at my school. I was in the front office of Dolores Huerta, a sitting target every day of my life for five years. In the front office behind some glass. Anybody could have walked in at any time and we did have people walk in who were very threatening. And I was terrified. And again, I'm a mother. I'm not going to lay down my life for the salary that I'm grateful for, but is not enough to lose my life for. So I made a decision that I had to, for my mental health, change jobs. And thankfully, something came up that was the perfect solution. I see no one at my job. My campus is a completely locked campus. People have to text me or call me from the gate and say, I'm here to get a book. I'm here to get a computer, whatever, and I let them in. So I feel perfectly safe at my job and I'm so thankful for it. But my son, not so much. My daughter works at an elementary school. We're a Burbank High, we're a Burbank USD family. We've all worked in the district at one time or another, all of us, my husband included. So I do, I have so much love for this district. My kids got amazing educations in the schools. Thank God neither of them ever suffered any kind of the horrible stories that I'm hearing tonight. And I am shocked to hear these stories. And as a school administrator working in the offices, I would often tell parents who would call and say their child was bullied. Their child was this, that, and no one did anything. And I would just listen very politely and listen. I say, I'm really sorry that that happened to your student. I'm so sorry that you went through that. And I say, with all due respect, you don't know what's happening. You don't know what our admin is doing at school and we wouldn't, you wouldn't want us to talk about your child with another parent. So we're doing what we can. I mean, I had them enraged and yelling at me and screaming at me how we were doing nothing. We were doing nothing. And I could just listen and then pass them off to the administrator and say, this person is upset. They say we're doing nothing. But now I'm hearing story after story after story from these, these young people who are coming forward. And I have to know as a woman, there is no way that some young girl is gonna put her vulnerability on stage like this if it didn't really happen and if it didn't really occur. No, why would any person do that if it wasn't real? Because it is traumatizing. So thank you for listening to me.
Okay, with that, we will close, uh, in-person public comment and we will move back to online public comment. Our first speaker is Brooke, uh, Shaw.
Hi. Um, I've prepared a quick statement, so it won't take too long. Um, I will use allegedly for legal reasons, but it is all my truth. Because John Paramo and Lee Carlton failed to take me seriously regarding Sam Kroll, a student, and my allegations against him. More people allegedly got raped and beaten and impregnated. Many of the survivors experienced drug or substance abuse now. You all sit here, uh, seemingly unfazed. You all failed us and each one of you sitting here should never work with children again. I don't know if I will, um, I don't know if I will, uh, ever forgive you for destroying the enjoyment I had for being at school with my friends. Um, y'all get good salaries for doing no important work with SA or rape. You are all responsible for hurting kids with your lack of action or advocacy and trying to push real problems onto BPT who almost never sides with the victim or will follow up. You have no idea how much I miss going to school. Seeing, uh, in research that Sam Kroll's mother is a teacher at Lee Carlton's kid's school and I believe was their teacher, makes the fact that she never reported Sam Kroll make perfect sense to me now. Um, I don't hate any of you. I think that, uh, you've hired some amazing people. My coach, Coach Newp, was one of the kindest men who's ever been in my life. He was, um, like a father to me during my time in his care. And I wish the victims of Perry Rex Bullington could have had access to a teacher as amazing as Coach Newp. But I hope that none of you ever work with children again. Uh, there's nothing you can do. I don't care. You have to figure it out. It's your, it's your job. I just can't believe, uh, you did this to us. You hurt us just like these perverts did. And you are all the problem. You should all resign. And if you really wanna save us, admit you were all wrong. Um, I hope none of you ever work with children again because you are all a disgrace. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other virtual public comment speakers? Okay, uh, we will close, uh, the first period then of public comment. Um, I will ask that, uh, there are two more speakers who have asked to speak, Aries and Gabriella, um, who Cindy's aware of. So if they do pop on at some point, um, just let me know. Thank you. Um, with that, we will go, um, to staff response, excuse me, what? Okay, uh, we will take, okay, if, I think it's probably important that everybody's here for staff responses. So I'm gonna do a three-minute, five-minute recess and then we'll be right back.
I've got some. I'll let it come out. No need, I don't give a...
All right, let's go.
Do. It matters to me. Because I, I don't... Does not mean I don't... What are we speaking on today? Yes.
At the beginning, at the end?
Don't worry, Joel.
Two periods. Hey, Andrew? We could get it. We're good to go? Okay, excellent. Thank you, everybody. We are going to resume the special meeting. So we've just concluded. Mr. Elman and others. Thank you. First things first, so we have obviously just taken public comment. There is a second period of public comment at the end. If you would like to make additional comments, please feel free to submit another card, and we will call through that at the end. I'm going to go to staff for their response, to the superintendent for his response. And I, and I want to start out. Tonight, easily. It is absolutely devastating to hear, as an educational leader in this community, these stories. We deal with very real challenges as it relates to finances, systems, you name it. We are always working to improve those. Those are recurring conversations. Hearing the stories from those young women who offered it today, horrifying to hear it. And it breaks my heart that you guys are holding that and managing that in this moment in your life. We have to do better, without a doubt. But there are layers to all of this, and I want to navigate that and communicate through that as clearly as possible. Tonight was not just an amalgamation of all things chaotic and crazy. You know, we have several issues. We have a Burbank High School situation which happened last week. We now are hearing your stories being elevated in new ways, both on social media and others. Some of those investigations were handled by this district. Other parts of the investigations were not. So in some situations, were we the arbiter of justice, maybe? In others, were we not? We weren't. Other jurisdictions take hold, law enforcement, et cetera. We have an obligation to ensure the young men and the young women of this district feel safe in school. I think for many folks who are here tonight, I don't think there's a thing we can say, to be honest, to restore any faith in the safety we attempt to offer through a number of moves that we commit significant amounts of time and energy and resources to. Having said that, tonight, we are going to do our best to start this conversation. We are not running from this conversation. There are additional town halls that we will be having, so I want you to know that. There are clearly next steps that I think we will get into after the staff, after the superintendent answers a lot of what we're dealing with and a lot of the responses that we had. I will also say, some of the information offered tonight either was not inclusive of the full picture or was not accurate. And that's not to go after specific stories or anything. But I will say this, that this is a pretty terrifying world. And more happens every day than we know. And it is in large part our privilege as a community, in particular a suburban community, where we don't get exposure to this all the time. This board, other jurisdictions, other elected officials get some glimpses of that world, and it is horrifying. In very real ways. We are also constrained by systems established both by the state and locally that ensure due process for all involved. Those systems often feel cold, detached, and don't feel, in many ways, responsive to what people are experiencing in a moment, especially after something like Burbank High School. I can't even imagine if my friend had shared, a personal friend of mine had shared a story like yours, how I would react in that moment, the justice I would want in that moment. I, I can relate to that. I can understand that. I can understand the hatred, rage, you name it, when somebody says, "Great, can you take a statement now?" I, I get that, and I don't think there's a person up here who doesn't get that. System's not perfect in a lot of ways. We can create more compassionate systems. We can do that. Unfortunately, at times, it takes experiences to educate us in these moments. And we are doing our best to proactively listen. I learned a lot here tonight. And we are empowered to, yes, ask detailed questions, but we also, as five of us, don't lock every gate at night. We entrust others to do that. We entrust systems to do that. We do our best to hold those systems accountable. Tonight, you may hear about resources. I don't want you to scoff and say, "This is just baloney." And they're just trying to say, "We don't have," no, we, we don't. We, we struggle. There is one-time money here, one-time money there that allows us to, like, fire extinguishers respond to things, but it doesn't allow us to say, "The whole thing's on fire." That's why we've gone for partial taxes. That's why we've gone for additional revenue so we could address some of these issues. Are, are employees paid enough? Heck, no. Can we attract enough of them? Heck, no. We don't have the money to do it. And that sounds insane, because it's not, again, we're talking about eight different scenarios here tonight between campus access to security cameras, to ID fraud, to, right? Like, there are so many different issues here. So when you think about the dollar and cents amount to respond to each of those, it is significant. It is. There is a dollars and cents. But personal safety, creating an environment where people can feel safe to report, where people know that they will be, that their claims, that their, that their experiences will be seen by somebody, that is something we absolutely have to endeavor to do. It doesn't guarantee justice in every moment, but we have work to do on that front. So with that, answering eight different scenarios of concerns. We, there are conversations that were had as a result of the Burbank High break-in. Wouldn't even, an intruder on campus. We also have found in this whole process that language is insane to navigate as we communicate what happened on campus. We have a local newspaper or online blog that had to issue a statement, then retract quickly because they use language too quickly. We've heard from student leaders, including at our board meeting last night, who talked about the trauma that that caused and the fear that then creates more fear and keeps building on fear within these campus communities. We've been on these campus communities. I have seen young women recoil when they see us on, I very much am living and understanding what people are experiencing right now, not in the same degree, but I see it. And you bet I feel accountable for it. You bet I feel responsible for it. I don't know what's happened in each one of your stories. When I see you come here today, when I see you offer it, I see, human to human, somebody I would never want that to happen to. So I have an obligation as a policymaker, and all of us will talk about and will ask questions further to create systems where I don't ever, either myself or anybody coming after me, has to sit here and hear stories and hear young women who should be enjoying this young time in your life because it goes quickly, and instead are here on a Friday night, sharing some of the most traumatic experiences of your life. So I cannot apologize for the things in each of your scenarios, in each of your stories, in each of what you've offered. But I can tell you, I feel responsible to do more, to ensure that there aren't more of it. If there's enough trust that you can work with me or work with any of us, we'd appreciate the help if you're in that place, if you're healthy enough to do it. If you're not, we're gonna do it anyway. But your perspective clearly counts, and that's why we are taking the time. That's why this meeting happened. So wanted to set that tone, and thank you for everybody, because all of you have lives that you're gonna return to. And by the way, I will not forget these stories tonight. And I live with these in very real ways. And I live with these in very real ways. So that I will just quickly respond to. So with that, we'll go to the superintendent. Again, some of these responses are going to sound about facility upgrades, things like that. Okay, just anticipate that, but we, this is clearly the beginning of listening on a lot of different fronts. And, and we will continue to engage in that process. After spring break, it looks like we have three different town halls set up. Again, we're not running. We feel responsible to do more and to, and, and by the way, the staff who are here today, they feel responsible too. So this is our community. We can run from this and clearly what are demons. Within our community, including a culture of harassment, just generally in this country, we can run from it. Or we as a community. Can honor the pain that people are experiencing now. And work our way to improve system so it doesn't happen further. I feel responsible for that. Dr. Hill.
Thank you, President Ferguson. As far as this process tonight, so we're in a place where we all will have an opportunity to do responses. And then we're going to do a presentation, some of the reflections and actions that we've done, based on what we've heard before. Clearly tonight, that will continue to revise and be updated. I'm going to take the time right now, knock it into the technical aspects. I'll do that during the presentation. First of all, thirty-two powerful stories tonight, and I know there are many more. And I know these formats, when we have a horseshoe and an audience and a microphone. It, it takes away from people's humanity, humanity and their personal stories. And I know the system of justice does that as well. Through the police system, the court system, school districts. It turns into. Processes and questioning and first of all, I just want to acknowledge that. I know there was doubts and questioning, do we believe your stories? Do we believe your truth? That is your truth. That is your story that you brought forward to that microphone. Yes. We listen to that. We hear that. That is yours. And I know through the process that there's other stories and truths on the other side of that. And then we get to a justice system and it doesn't always feel like you're getting justice or getting heard. And the number one thing I took away from this listening part of tonight, and we have to do a lot more of that. It's like, we have to make sure we're all truly listening. And we hear each other's truth. You may not agree with me. You may not agree with the decision, but we have to hear each other. And acknowledge the trauma and I, I can see it. I can feel it. I heard the trauma from each of you. That's not made, trauma's not made up. Now, how we restore that trauma and work through that trauma? First, we have to look at the processes and the systems we have in place and make sure it's trauma informed. We have a great partnership where I keep mentioning Burbank Family Services because they are trained experts in trauma. And we want to make sure we continue to build that partnership, which is decades that we have that partnership. But my reflection is we usually, after the incident, we say, go call FSA. Go call a therapist or a counselor, get that help. But President Ferguson, Vice President Weisberg, and I've been talking about, it's like, how do we bring FSA to look at our processes? How do we make sure that, are there biases? Are there ways that we can make sure it doesn't feel as cold? It doesn't feel as responsive. We, everyone has the opportunity to be heard and supported throughout the entire process. That is clear. That has to change. We've, we've been talking about that, how to do that. So I want to make sure we focus on, we are listening, we're hearing. At the site level, at the district office level, at the board level, in partnership with the police department, we are doing that. But the justice system sometimes makes it feel cold and you may not receive the justice you feel like deserve. And sometimes it's lack of evidence or they, we can't conclude. I just want to reiterate, your truth, your story, there's your truth, your story. And that process is not always perfect and that process has that coldness that we have to work through. Is how do we improve that? I do want to comment though, is we have to remember the aspect of humanity. Some of the comments tonight dehumanized others. I will be specific. I, I get it. I, I know I get paid for that. You can attack me. You can question if I have kids. You can question if my kids go to private school or public school. Why does that matter? I'm a human. I have taken a responsibility to serve every single child and staff in this district. I think all of us can do better than that. We do not need to dehumanize each other. I heard that about Dr. Paramo, Ms. Carlton. You may not appreciate the way they came up with a decision or the process to the outcome. Give us constructive feedback, myself included. All of us need that, but let's not attack and dehumanize. We can do better. We will resolve these issues and these challenges if we hear each other's stories. We acknowledge that. We acknowledge we may have differences, but we have to truly engage in dialogue and hear that. And work through it to get to a better system and better outcomes and better support so that we can get through the trauma and heal and move forward. So that's one key aspect. So as I hear, if I break it apart. On the sexual harassment and assault. We have to make sure that it's more of a caring and compassionate process. And we want your feedback and we have to listen more about where did that not happen? Where can we improve that? Second, whether it happened on campus or off campus, how do we provide those supports so everyone can get through? That process and be stronger through that? How do we do that? And third is really about the restorative practice and making sure we're stronger and we work for it. We have a lot of work to do together. President Ferguson talked about having additional listening sessions. I'll talk about it later, but we're going to have it after spring break and if we need to schedule more, we'll schedule more. We need to do smaller focus groups, we'll do that. I want to hear from people watching and people here. How do we get to that part of this didn't work, let's do better? How do we get the feedback so we're working together for a better solution? Some of the comments earlier were absolutely correct, like we're doing based on what our intakes are and how we resolve that. And here's some ideas. It's not the end of improving. So how do we continue to do that? So someone talked to a couple of speakers, like, are you going to apologize? I am so, excuse me, I'm sorry. So I, I, I appreciate your passion, your frustration, your anger. This format is not a back and forth, so I do appreciate that. Hearing the stories, I'm so sorry what happened to you and your experience. We all are. If the system failed, we want to review that and see how the system can be improved. If individuals did not. Do what they should be do, we will investigate that. But what we can't do is post partial information, not the whole truth on social media. We can't take snippets of examples. You did that tonight to me. You posted fake information without consulting me. That's not okay. And I just, it's not a back and forth. I just, since you're recording this, I just want to be clear. We have to be very careful and thoughtful about how we move forward. We have to validate the facts. We have to validate Instagram accounts. We don't make allegations that are on people unless we have the truth. So I think it's critical, otherwise we're causing more trauma and we're not healing moving forward. So the pain and the suffering, yes, I apologize for that. If it happened on a campus, if we weren't able to help restore and heal, that is serious. We will do better. If it's something that wasn't out of our control. Where the judicial system did not give an outcome. That you felt was appropriate, that's a separate process and we need to talk through that. I know there's a lot of frustration when we talk about examples. And people say, I heard this, but you won't tell us what happened. That's part of that cold system where we have to work with individuals involved. We, we partner with the police department, we partner with the courts. We work through that process and not everybody, not all of us are privy to that information. But there are checks and balances along the way to make sure it happens. Regarding the safety concerns on campus. Comments, where are you going to look at after school? Are you looking at gates? These are the things we want feedback on. Where do you see weaknesses and vulnerabilities? How do you get onto campus? Specifically about Burbank High. That door needs to be open. Because it's a fire code. Can we, are we going to look at, can we look at, can you redesign the parking structure? Can you put more safeguard? Absolutely. I, I like a lot of the ideas that came up. We need to prioritize that. Which ones are going to give us greater system and security faster and sooner? But to come onto campus, there are campus supervisors to check those IDs and I heard that tonight. That should be an expectation. If it's not happening, that's a problem. So how do we support the humans, individuals who may make mistakes? With technology to help be that safeguard, so having both of those. So I appreciate the specific examples on that. How do we look at when our schools are open? When are they closed? What do we want the school to look like and feel like so that we have safety, but we also have a, a learning environment that is conducive? These are struggles that we can't solve alone. We need to have the feedback. I'll go into more of the initial details and specifics that we're thinking about doing later and have that feedback. But I just want to let everyone know, we're listening, we're hearing, we're acknowledging this. This is not something that, there's no incentive for us to do a cover-up or a PR statement or to just not think about it. Every single employee in this district thinks about how to protect students and staff all the time. Almost twenty-four seven. I guarantee that. I'm a father, but it doesn't matter if I'm a father or not. An employee of this district. I am the leader of this district and yes, the buck does stop with me. And I make sure that I hear from our students, our employees, that what is working, what is not? How do we improve? How do we do better? And put those changes into place. And it was mentioned earlier that anything I say tonight doesn't matter. And I hear that. I absolutely hear that. But the reason I'm speaking so long right now is I want you to know that I was listening. I'm reflecting. I am thinking about how we can do this better and I am hopeful. That we can continue an honest, productive dialogue with supports to do better as a community. You don't have to trust me. I'm not asking that. You don't know me. I'm trying to share a little bit about who I am and how I think and process through this so you get to know me. But I'm hopeful that we will continue to work through it because that's the only way this is going to get better. I, again, appreciate. And I am pained. And I'm going to struggle. To sleep at night, listening to stories. I know many of the stories that were come, that came up here tonight. I know there are many nuances to that. But I do not want anyone to walk away and say, I'm discounting your truth and your story. Something happened that was not okay for you. That's what you shared tonight. Does that mean it's something that we can discipline at a school level? Does that mean something that the police can discipline or the courts? That may be different, but I don't want anyone to walk away that you do not believe in your story. It is clear there's trauma and there's pain. That justice aspect of it. That's a very complicated aspect of it and there, there's another story on the other side and that, that can get messy and ugly. And I, I hear the frustration and pain. What we can do is, how do we ensure more that doesn't happen? The ideas about more education. More awareness. What is consent? How do we treat each other as human? How do we have safeguards so that opportunities don't happen? Those are all things we can work on. So we can prevent that from happening. So people don't feel that way. Or experience events that they experience. That's what we can do together. Thank you.
With that, I will go to board colleagues for their responses. We'll start with Ms. Tabit.
This wasn't the meeting I was expecting tonight. I was expecting to hear and talk about. I guess you would call it physical school safety, what we were going to do to. Make sure our campuses relatively safer from intruder, possible. Situations that could take place, should we wear badges, ID brace, ID badges or not? You know, what could we put in? And, and instead. I see moms, dads. Young women who've come in to tell us a different kind of story tonight about their safety and their thoughts. I have two daughters and a son. And most of the time in raising my two, my three children, my biggest fear for them. Was being bullied and harmed in such a way from that bullying and I wanted to protect them from that. Never in my life. Did I worry about my daughters being sexually abused or attacked while on a school campus. By a fellow student or by a adult. That was. That is just way beyond my ability to understand and, and feel. But yet, when you ladies were talking, I was picturing my own daughters. And what would I do if they came to me and said, mom, you know, and told me their story? And like some of those moms, yeah, you bet, I'd want to stand up and fight and, and do what I needed to do to protect my girls. And even my son, because it, there's protection there too. To make sure that they. Didn't have to feel like you feel. And I'm, I'm sorry that you have to feel that way and I'm sorry you had to go through this. And I hope nothing like this ever happens to you again. It was really hard. It was really hard to sit here and listen to you tell your stories. I'm. It, it has to be hard also to be the adults, the school personnel, who also has to listen and try to figure out. How to go about, I think, Mrs. Gilmore, you, you stated that fairly well. It's not easy. It's nowhere near what you went through. I get that and, and probably my sorry will not ever take away your pain. My sorry. Won't ever make you maybe feel completely whole again, but I hope you find a way. By talking, by, you know, whatever works for you to feel. Better and a stronger human being at the end of this. I, I really hope that. And I hope that we do what we can as a school district, as a community. Because there is a whole community that needs to take. A portion of this and talk about why this even happens and, and where do we go from here? I really, I really wish it was just about campus security and not the security and safety of human beings. And you deserve to feel every day, our constitution guarantees it. For you to feel safe, for you to be happy, for you to be able to pursue your dreams and your choices every single day, every minute. And that was taken away. I'm not a big crier, but I look at you and I see my girls and it hurts. And I, sorry, I see my children and it hurts. And I hope you never, ever, ever have to go through anything remotely close to this again. And I, I hope we're here to help you. Or community resources here to help you to make sure we get you there. And I hope it never, ever happens to anybody else. Going forward. I have a new grandson. And, and it's, President Ferguson said it correctly. It's an ugly world. Most of the time we live really, really. In a, in a happy place, you know, where we think everybody's good and safe. And we have an amazing police department that if we call them, we know will be there in less than three minutes. And I'm thankful for that every day and thankful that a lot of times I don't have to call them. In my home, in my, in my space, you know? So. I, I promise you that I will listen and where I can, do what I can to help. And to make sure that, I can't guarantee you anything in life. I can't. I can't. That would be a, a bold-faced lie if I said, I'm gonna make sure this never happens again. I, I can't do that. But I can listen and we can talk and we can advocate and we can have instructions, classes. We could, we could do all kinds of things to hope and pray that it doesn't happen to another human being, male or female, in any way, shape or form. Um, so, I, I I, I thought as you were talking, what would I say to my daughter or my son if they came to me with a story? And I, I still don't have an answer. But don't think that I go home and I'm not thinking about it. That it's not gonna be a conversation I have in my head as I'm at work, uh, and doing and taking care of things and listening to other people who maybe have some advice in it and experience in this for us. So, thank you. Thank you for being so brave tonight and coming out. That's, that's a step, isn't it?
Thank you, uh, Ms. Ponser Campard.
Thank you, President Ferguson. Um, so we know that the goal of this district is to teach kids. But we know also that kids can't learn if they don't feel safe. And I am sorry you don't feel safe, that you haven't felt safe and that you haven't felt heard. It truly breaks my heart. I'll get back to that. Can I do the, a couple of like, um, okay, so on school site safety, um, I do wanna thank you for the suggestions. Um, I think there's a lot of things here to work with. Um, at one of my first board meetings, we approved school site safety plans. Um, now, these are public documents. So I would understand why principals wouldn't put every single risk in them. But looking at them, reviewing the ones at least for boroughs and for, and for Burbank High, it's pretty clear to me that there's more work to be done there. Um, because we weren't ready for this, looking at them in retrospect, which is always much easier, obviously. Um, Mrs. Hernandez, I don't know if you're, um, uh, the story that you told about what happened with your child at Jefferson is my literal nightmare. Um, I'm furious that it happened. I'm furious that we didn't hear about it. We hear about a lot of other things that are, um, that happened on our campuses. And that is, it's awful. Um, to our victims that bravely came and spoke today, thank you. I did not understand the pattern of this until tonight. I think many of us were hearing these stories for the first time that we may have only heard in hearsay or rumors. And so it matters that you came and told your story. Please know that. Um, from a purely systematic point of view, we are all mandated reporters. Every school site employee is a mandated reporter. That means that these reports should be coming in. And we should be able to know how many of those reports are coming in? How many, uh, get referred to the police, uh, what the results were? That's, at the very least, what I need to be able to look parents and students in the eye and be able to say that we're doing everything we can in our power to keep them safe. Um, even if this is something that we have to look at in closed session, I understand. But I personally need to know, um, when those things are happening. You know, we get a notification every time that police or paramedics are called to a school, even if it's like, um, pretty minor.
Removed from a school.
Removed from a school, yes. Um, and that we didn't know about some of the things that have happened here is, is upsetting. Um, so, um, I, I like Dr. Hill's point about, um, it doesn't, it shouldn't matter whether we have kids in the district. Um, I do have kids in this district. I have a daughter in Kinder and a son who will be a B U S C student in the coming years. What that gives me differently than some of my fellow board members is just a different perspective. It doesn't mean that they have any different stake in this. These are people who care deeply about our kids. I've only known some of them for a few months, and I, I do truly trust that. Um, this isn't a well-paid job, as many of you know. This is a basically unpaid job. Um, they wouldn't be here on a Friday night trying to do something better if they didn't care. Um, please know that I hear you, see you, I join you in wanting action and answers. I'm sorry that this happened. I'm sorry that we are here. Um, I've not been here long before getting elected. I knew like school systems and how the finances worked and, you know, enough to be dangerous in the classroom, uh, from a, a pedagogical sense. Um, but I didn't become a B U S C parent until this last fall. Um, I know that your trust has been broken over the past years, and I don't blame you. Frankly, some of my trust has been broken tonight in hearing your stories. Um, but I hope that we can take that forward and as we repair, make it stronger. That's my hope. And I know it might be uh, an aggressive hope, given where we sit today. But, um, thank you for all who spoke.
Thank you, Dr. Arga Conian.
Thank you, Mr. President. So some of you have shared my story before. Um, I come from a war-riddled country. For two years, from age twelve to fourteen, every day I went to school, we got bombed. I do suffer from PTSD. And I've lost friends, neighbors. And just the fear of going to school, the way to the school. But yet, the school was my safest place, a country that was getting bombed every day. So hearing these stories brings back all this trauma to me because that should be the safest place for you to go. And I'm sorry, because I know what it feels, because these stories come back to me. People ask me, why don't you like 4th of July? I said, because every night, growing up, when they were bombing us, it was 4th of July. It's called anti-air artillery. When plane is going over you in the light, call it the shadow of death. It passed you, that means you were okay. And I know these emotions and all the things you're talking about, the, 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 what you've suffered from, it's not gonna go away. And it comes back and it's difficult. It needs a lot of healing. I'm still going through that process myself. I can't even watch some animal dying on the side because it brings back the memories of people who died. My own friends who survived bombings and some of them died. It's unfortunate, but I'm sorry to hear these stories. This is very, very disturbing to me. And I, we do have an eleven-year-old that goes to the schools, and I should not be worrying about his safety. And if some of you know, I've been out there protesting against all the gunshots we have in Burbank and also the issues. Because I know what a gun does to a person. I know what a gunfight is. A lot of people don't. I do, I hear a gunshot, I get, I duck, I automatically duck, because that's what we did. So thank you for coming forward and bringing these issues, because it's very difficult, because I rarely talk about my problems, what I've been through, because it comes back and again and again. Little things triggers it. So, again, and sometimes I've, I come across to be serious, not showing emotions, because I have to oppress sometimes. And it's a mechanism, it's a defense mechanism sometimes. But I can tell you that as someone who also runs a large organization, if people don't perform, I will terminate them. It is important, because if you get paid to do a job and you're not held accountable, you should lose your job. It's the reality of the world. And, and sometimes I can wear that hat if I want to. But I think there's a lot to talk about. But also, you know, the question of SROs was, was brought up. Look, I mean, the reality of it is also sometimes certain students will not do what they're supposed to if they see that there is law enforcement presence. I think we've been having this conversation over and over again. And I want us to seriously look at that as well, because you know, sometimes that is, that's what it takes. But I think having these conversations tonight, hearing some of your stories, worrying about my own child's safety, that concerns me. And I think, again, my colleagues here, we have the best interest, but I think we need to more, he- hear more of some of the suggestions I really liked, you know? But also I have to remind people, sometimes we talk about locking down, then you'll hear people saying, well, we don't want our students go to prison, right? Or sometimes we say we want law enforcement. I think the conversation and that we've started already, um, it's great. But at the same time, I do agree with you. It shouldn't take one incident where everyone all of a sudden get all right. And, uh, I think what I can tell you and I can promise you is that, that for me, this is very personal. Sharing your stories, it was very difficult for me to listen, because but I think we're, we're, we have board that, that understands the whole process. And yes, there is a little bit of the other factors with the legal stuff. But you know what? I don't want us to also get too technical. We're someone who studied law. It's not, you shouldn't, it's not as, compassion can always overcome. And as someone who believes in justice, justice brings you happiness. All of you are here in pursuing justice. And as in Plato's Republic, what is the pursuit of happiness? It's, it's about justice. So thank you for your, you know, you pursuing justice. We will get there. Thank you very much.
Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you. I'm too short. Um, I wanna sort of break up my comments two ways. I'm gonna talk a little bit about personal, and then I wanna talk to you about, uh, some of the things we've been doing since in the past week and a half, two weeks. I think both of those things are important. Um, I wanna thank everybody who came out. I think almost everybody in this room is here with a genuine care and concern for themselves and the people that they care about in the district. Um, I think there are also people in this room who are, the term I use is trauma vultures or trauma vampires, who often show up to feed off of the pain of others.
Excuse me, Mr. Schlossman. It's, you, again, you know this, you're a routine attender of our meetings. You understand the board has a time to speak, then you have a time to speak. Okay? Your time has concluded for now. There will be an additional period of public comment at the end. You can register that same expletive at that time. But in the meantime, I need you to set the example for the young people in the room and allow Dr. Weisberg to speak and stop interrupting her. Thank you.
So again, thank you to everybody who's here, who is looking authentically for solutions. Um, I think it's really easy to lose the personal when you've experienced so much trauma and you see this sort of divide between the people that are responsible and then the lack of help or care and concern. And I wanted to sort of echo what I think everybody up here said to some degree, which is that, you don't, I probably don't know very much about us, right? Because that's irrelevant in a lot of ways. Um, and I don't think empathy should be, um, connected to having shared the same experience. But I do wanna share that when I was in high school, I, uh, was also sexually assaulted and abused. And now as somebody who is in her forties, I understand what it's like to carry a lifetime of that and how you process that. Now, my experience is not the same as anybody else is here, nor will it be, right? But I can tell you that on some level, that, that process, that experience is something that I, that I understand. Um, so listening to the stories for all of us is hard, right? But that didn't need to happen to me for me to feel empathy for you and to be able to say to you how sorry I am that that happened. High school's difficult enough, middle school is difficult enough, life is difficult enough. Um, and I know how re-traumatizing it is to come up here and tell the story again, especially when the first, however many times you told it, you didn't feel, you didn't feel hurt. That's monumental, and I'm, I'm deeply thankful to all of you for doing it. You shouldn't have had to, but I'm thankful that you did. Um, I, Ani came to, I think she left. Is Ani here anymore? She, she left. So, um, Ani came to the office hours. One of the things that I did, uh, immediately following up, office hours every week. They're open to anybody. I hope you'll virtually join me. Um, Dr. Dr., Mr. Ferguson and I held them, and Ani came, and it was really great. I had never met her before. Um, and one of the things that she said that she would convey, and I hope she had to all of you, is that I would love to sit down with any of you at any time, uh, and talk. So hopefully that was communicated, um, by Ani to all of you. And I'll, I'll say it again now, just so you hear me say it. We're here. You can reach us via email, you can reach us via phone. I'll give you my phone number. Um, this should be a constant conversation. Uh, Mr. Huerta brought up having more student involvement, something that Mr. Ferguson and I are gonna be starting at the beginning of the, uh, next year, is the Student Advisory Council, where we get more direct input from students consistently. So I hope those of you who aren't graduating, please be part of it. We wanna, we want your voice, we want your insight. Nobody knows the school better than you. Um, I, I'm, I will be asking Ani about those impact statements that she received, those seventy-five impact statements. There's not a lot that we can do unless we know what's happening. Um, and I will tell you, I share, uh, what my colleague said. The majority of the stories that I heard tonight, I'm hearing for the first time. That's not an excuse, but that's to let you know I have a lot of work to do to better understand where the system worked and where it didn't and what we need to be doing differently. Um, that's just the truth, but I wanted to share that with you. Um, so I think there's sort of two issues that I'm hearing, and I, and I hope you'll tell me if I'm missing the mark here. Um, issue one is, we need, we're talking about increasing safety as it relates to things like intruders and people on campus and making sure that everybody feels safe. And then also increasing the, the meaningful ways in which we provide support when people are reporting something that happened to them. And those are two different things. They, they, they equal a deeper level of safety, but they're sort of two different things. So one of the things that we've been talking about is how we get trauma-informed professionals to work with us. Um, a lot of the ideas that people said, talking about like, how can we evolve, involve independent groups to help us when people are reporting? There's so many good ideas that were shared tonight. Um, wrote them all down, and I'll be sitting with them for a long time. Um, other specifics, so in relationship, I can't remember, and I asked about the gunshots, um, if you're here. Okay, so, uh, four years ago, I spoke to then-council member Sharon Springer and Gable Letty about, uh, sunset laws, which means that if a gun store leaves, you can't put a gun store back where it was. Nothing has come of that yet. However, we have a really fantastic current city council that is really invested in addressing this. So we've been, been in lengthy conversations with, um, Vice Mayor Schultz and Mayor Anthony about how we can't, because some of the, the gun stores are within the sort of like safety, right? So we are talking about this and have been for a long time. I don't have a solution for you, which completely sucks, but I do wanna let you know that it is a conversation that has been had and will continue to happen. We're doing a joint meeting at some point, um, with council that we, please come. Um, the mayor, oh, mm-mm. No, he wrote it down. Oh, we're meeting with him on Monday. I thought it was canceled, but it's not, which is awesome. We'll, we'll send out information. It's virtual, join us, please. Um, also, you, city council is a great place to go. You can do, I don't know if you can do it virtually anymore, or if the comments are now all in person. But talking to them about increased support for, um, with our joint use agreements, talking about when the campus is open to the public, how we can provide more safety and security for people. That was a really important point that people brought up. Um, hold on, hold on, hold on. Um, just to clarify, Ms. Bido's comment about SROs, we didn't eliminate SROs. We have two SROs. Um, now we have, but now we have one, but not because we fired the SRO. So I just wanna be clear that, I mean, and we could have, we can have a much longer conversation offline about whether or not I think SROs are effective models, but I wanna be clear about that. I also want to, um, highlight the Chief Albanese who is here, uh, and I had a really great conversation, a really informative conversation about the gun stores and the ways in which they sort of check people who come to buy guns. And so I do, I do wanna highlight, um, we have a very responsive police department. And I'm not talking about when you call them up and you, and something's wrong. I'm talking about if you ask for a meeting or you ask to sit down and you ask for information. Um, I know we all have varying uh, feelings and relationships with the police, but I do wanna let you know, I mean, they're here, they're here today not to, um, be, uh, Uh, feelings and relationships with the police, but I do want to let you know, I mean, they're here, they're here today not to um be uh an oppressive presence. They're here because they're active participants and they're here to answer questions as well. So I know for some people, it, it makes people uncomfortable and I absolutely understand why that is. But they're here because we asked them to come to provide in- information and insight if needed. Um, so I, I wanted to say that as well. Speaking a little bit more about. Burbank. Hi, and I know that Mr. Ferguson is going to get into it in more detail, but I do want to share that. Um, I know that Mr. Ferguson and Dr. Hill, they did a really thorough walkthrough. I did the same with Mr. Ferguson at back to school night. Already so much conversation in the works about ways that we're going to look at different safety issues. A couple of the, of, of you brought up some really important points. Um, and I know Mr. Ferguson has brought it up similar, which is to say that like. Students know the campus kind of best, right? Like you know where the doors are that get propped open. You know where the sort of the fences are and, and Mr. Ferguson went to Burbank High, so he was pointing out to me as we walked around like all the places that he knew. To get there and they haven't changed. Um, so one of the things that I know Dr. Hill and Mr. Ferguson are going to do is do a walkthrough. And a conversation, not just with students and staff, but with custodial and with maintenance, because everybody kind of knows the ins and outs a little bit differently. And we know that we need multiple perspectives to understand truly the changes that we need to make. So. What you, what. I think that's really, really important. So it's not just our thoughts, right? Like, I don't know Burbank High the way that students do or, or Burrows or Monterey or anywhere. Right? I know because I visit, but I don't know because I go there. So please know that we value your opinion and your insight. In a meaningful way and we'll be looking to gather it if you feel comfortable sharing. Hold on, I'm just scrolling apologies, apologies. Um, a lot of the specifics I know we're going to get into with the report, so I'm gonna, I'll leave those till later, but I, I want to go back again to everybody who shared their story tonight. And, and let you know how much it meant. And um encourage you, please, if you feel comfortable, reach out again. Um, I'll give you my cell phone at the end of the night. Uh, you, our emails are accessible all the time. And, and I want to say, I know sometimes it feels like. The only way to really get something to happen is if you come and speak in front of a mic. I get that feeling, but don't wait until a board meeting. I'm not saying don't come to a board meeting. Come, say hi. But, but don't wait. If there's something right now in the moment that you want to talk about that's scaring you, that's upsetting you, that you want answers to, you don't have to wait. Um, we're here to respond to you. So I just, I want to say that again. And I know for some of you, it doesn't, maybe it doesn't feel safe to reach out to us. Maybe it doesn't feel. Uh, genuine that I'm saying that. And I understand that as well. But I, I'll say it again because I mean it and it's, and it's true. Um, so I hope you will reach out. I hope you will continue to have conversations um. At our safety town halls, at my office hours, whatever it is, it's available to you. And if those times don't work, we'll find something else. Um, and I, and I say that for the parents, for, for the allies in the room, for people who are, for e- everybody who's been here tonight. Um, I think, I think. I think that is all I have for right now. Um. Sorry. Yes. So thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Dr. Weisberg. So uh, we, we've gone through board responses. There are a few. We are going to go into the presentation right now that is specifically dealing with Burbank High School and what happened in terms of campus access recommendations. That are kind of the initial phase before additional listening is occurring. Before that happens though. Um, I, I do want, I'm looking to my colleagues for um consent to do a few report backs relatively soon. Um, so first things first, I will say, uh, I've reached out to Mayor uh Constantine Anthony as president of the school board. Um, Dr. Weisberg has joined me in reaching out to Vice Mayor Schultz. Um, so we, one, this is not just an issue for schools and education. This is an issue for our community. So we are working together to basically put on a summit, a one-day summit. On sexual harassment and assault in the city of Burbank. Review both government agencies and their approaches to sexual assault. Claims, reports, you name it. There's a lot of good work that happens to bring people to justice at this moment in time. Um, but we can always work to make sure our, our systems are more informed and more compassionate. Uh, and that's pretty clear tonight. Uh, so we are going to be working on that starting on Monday. It is not a public meeting, so it, just the, the two-on-two meeting is not a public meeting, but there will be a full joint meeting that we are looking to schedule. Likely in the spring or early summer. Um, so that will be out and about. I would like, uh, as we did talk about, uh, we have. Trauma-informed uh professionals, frankly, who can come and review our procedures, not just on reporting, but also on. On how staff manages these claims. Including. Who they share the information with. How they talk about it with others. I think all of that's really important. Um, I'd like a report back. In probably the next thirty to sixty days, specifically on campus supervisors and where we're at with hiring on that front. And I would like an audit. Of all sexual assault claims in the district for the past three years. And the impacts. On whoever it was claimed to be perpetrated against. On the attendance and GPA of those individuals. Which are usually traditionally methods by which we can determine success in a school environment. After. Those claims are filed. How many of those situations? Are administrators coming back with one determination over another? That's all within our capacity, correct? And Dr. Weisberg?
Along the lines of reporting, I, I don't remember how long ago this was. It doesn't really matter, but we had talked about having regular reporting to the board about anytime a student. Reports an incident, not just the emails that we get about when police or, or paramedics show up, but. That'll, it'll give us the ability to sort of monitor trends along with you and see what's going on. Um, obviously with any and all confidentiality measures that need to be put into place. I think that'll be really important for us to continue being proactive, not reactive.
And, and I will say the look back for three, thank you, Dr. Weisberg. And, and the look back for three years is anonymized data. I do not want specifics. Uh, I, I want us to, to handle that with, you know, the utmost care, but. This is, wh- what is being spoken about is a trend. And if it. Sounds like it. So if we can uh. Provide additional data on that front, I will say, let's do it. Also, I do want to explain that the Board of Education in certain moments acts as the final appeals body. For. Students and for staff in different situations, expulsions, firings, you name it, terminations. So there are moments where information does not come to us immediately. It goes through a process and then comes to us. So. That to say, it's not surprising that we haven't heard about some of these things. Um, it's terrible now that we do. Um, but it is also a part of the process. So this. Step to bring information, at least for the past three years. Will allow us to elevate. The stories as a whole and understand. What's happening here. I think there's likelihood that we're going to need. Additional. Outreach just on sexual assault. And the claims around that. Um, I want to make sure though, that if we're putting that on, that we're doing so with clinicians and folks who can offer care. In those moments. Um, to take care of these young women and men. Uh, who have reported as well and who have reached out. Okay, with that, we'll go. So. That concludes for tonight. There will be additional period of public comment at the end. We are going to go to now the presentation on the Burbank High specific. A lot of these, again, are going to be facilities related. So we just wanted to give kind of forewarning, so we're not shocking anybody with that. Dr. Hill.
And right, just a brief comment on just the sexual assault and the reporting. There was a couple of comments and I've seen it just going around social media. It's like, I don't want to report because nothing will happen. I, I think we all have to reinforce that if it's not reported. Action can't be done. So the, the email I sent out and I posted on Facebook earlier. If you heard there's someone else had a bad experience and they say, don't report. Report. Report to the police department, report to the school district. We talked, WeTip, people ask about WeTip. That is a, is a website that you can. I put in my email so you can learn about how that, it's third party. They make the information anonymous back to us so that we know that the claim. So you can report to us with your information. You report to police department. Everyone has to report. Please continue to engage as we, as President Ferguson just talked about. If there's better ways that we can do our process to hear the story. We want to look at that. And the last aspect of. The hardest is discipline and justice. And I want us to focus on reporting and make sure people know they get the care and the support. For a lot of us, we don't realize we're in trauma and shock as we go through this and we don't think we need help. Mental health and support is still taboo for some people. We need to rely on our partners, but FSA is an amazing partner. We have to have that support. And then we have to go through the judicial process. And I feel a lot of this is focused on. The outcome of justice wasn't granted, but we can't ignore the first two steps. So I just want to keep stressing that. So for changing gears completely, I know this is a hard night to keep changing gears. But I just, now we're going to Burbank High and we want to talk about what did, what happened? What did we learn? What are we doing? And I greatly appreciate Chief Albanese for being here with his team. It's been a very long night, but I absolutely appreciate Chief, if you don't mind coming up and just giving us a debrief of Burbank High School and incident.
Not at all. My way of introduction, my name is Michael Albanese. And can I kind of face these folks?
Yeah, you want to come sit up here?
Who I want to talk to. Uh, I'm the chief of police of Burbank. Some of you folks we have not met. Um, so uh, this is going to be conversational as far as what happened March sixth. So there was the incident at Burbank High School. And understand that there is an ongoing investigation. You have a collaboration with the District Attorney's Office. There is pending criminal litigation. You have victims that are. Protected because they are juveniles. So I can't and we can't talk about them. And, and there is due process associated with. The incident. Unsettling for all of us, um, and, but please uh understand that we are doing everything that we can. I have uh Sergeant Loffer who is here, who has oversight of the investigation. And her boss is here, Lieutenant Lasacco. And there's, there's not much that we can talk about because it is confidential. And if uh you're the victim, you're the friend of the victim, you're the daughter of the victim. That's confidential and protected. So um, that's where we're at on the investigation. And if I can take on uh Superintendent Hill. If you're a victim. Please. Reach out to us. Please, please, please. And, and if you have a friend of a friend. I understand that it's hard to believe, but one time I was. I, I had hair. Kind of looked good. Now, now look what happened. If you have a friend of a friend. Do the friend a favor. Just do a reach out. Our folks. Are skilled at doing confidential investigation. And I know it's tough at times to trust adults, trust law enforcement. I get all that. But please reach out to us. And, and if you are passionate about victims. And passionate about the process. Think about law enforcement, criminal justice, or education as a career. Or even counseling. So uh, we have the Director of FSA here. So uh, I'll tell you how I got into law enforcement. I hit bullies. I hate bullies. And uh, uh, that's why I got into law enforcement. So does that help or do you need more?
What I want to do is if we could open it up to five questions from folks in the audience who are here tonight. Um, if we can do that. You may not be able to answer all of them, but.
But I have Lieutenant Lasacco and Sergeant uh Loffer here. He'll, he'll pick me up.
Great, excellent. Uh, why don't you go ahead and select, Chief? Thank you. Yep, go ahead. You pick. Does that help to answer your question?
School, school problem.
What I will tell you about the school is that they, they, they don't have the ability to tell us that you can't talk to somebody in front of them. I'm going to take that off their back. We're conducting a criminal investigation, not a civil investigation. We don't do that. There's a criminal investigation. That's our ability by law to do that and discipline for the teachers, for the staff, for the principal. They have no ability to tell us that.
Okay, we've got four more questions and I do want, so if we could limit the back and forth, so it doesn't become just on those. I want to get specific to the incident. Uh, Ms. Little in the back.
And if I could. There are individuals that are watching at home and they cannot hear unless we're at that microphone.
So if you can come up.
And I'll repeat the question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question. Ma'am, go ahead.
So it depends. How about that? Uh, it, it really depends on.
You repeat the question.
Sure.
Thank you.
The question was, is this, this, this lady says that if she has instructed her children. That if they're called to the office to be spoken to by someone of authority, uh, she's instructed them to tell the person. If they're uncomfortable, to instruct that person that they uh are not to talk to them until they have an opportunity to call their parents. The answer to that is really truly, it depends on the situation. Each circumstance is going to be. Different. Uh, there are some cases where that might happen and we are obligated to stop. There are some cases where we may not be obligated, but it just sounds like or feels like the right thing to do. Uh, but there are other circumstances, quite frankly, where the law allows us to continue doing something and we. Will consider doing that depending on the totality of the uh circumstances.
Three more?
So, so the question is, is her child. Her child was uh assaulted by somebody at school and she's asking if she can report that now by a teacher. By a teacher. So the answer is absolutely. You can make that report anytime. We're more than happy to take that report and fully investigate it.
And then we'll finish up.
If you don't mind coming to the microphone. And just on the last question, I just want to be very clear is that if there's any incident that we feel that could be suspected child abuse. We are mandated reporters. We file a, a report with the police department. We investigate, we work with them and we do discipline action. What can be frustrating with the process is people don't know what the discipline action is. And I know there's been email correspondence with Mr. Hubble. I've been copied on some of those. So I just want to make sure that we're clear is like, we do have a process we follow. What can be frustrating is you don't know what our investigation determined with the police. But I want to be clear on this, Mr. Bowlington, and other examples. When we work with the police and it is determined that is a criminal crime, that is public information that is released. And so if it's not released, so Mr. Bowlington does not have criminal charges against them. That was stated earlier, that is not factual. So I want to make sure we're stating facts. With Mr. Bowlington, it's a civil case. And then civil case is not criminal, not going to jail. It could be two disputing parties disagreeing on what happened and they're working through the judicial system with lawyers. So I do want to draw that line on sexual abuse claims, rape claims. If it's criminal, it's a, it's, it's charges pressed and it's public. And that's that process. A lot of examples tonight are talking about criminal charges. Those are not filed. Those have not happened. It makes it easier on us as a school district to expel a student. They're expelled if it's criminal charges. Employees are fired, criminal. When it gets to civil, and that's why I was talking about the, that's where justice people are disputing on that. And they don't feel like they were heard and the judicial system on the civil side does not give an outcome for the one. But criminal, absolutely, we follow through that process. I just wanted to show that, draw that distinction because I've heard a lot of stories tonight that blended the two.
So sir, if I can restate your question, you were asking, uh, where, where it kind of shifts over between a school investigation versus a police investigation? Is that accurate? Okay. So there are a couple of different prongs to that and I will try, try to address this. As, as Superintendent Hill mentioned, the school has their part of the investigation. When it is alleged that a crime occurred, that's when it falls into the police realm. Um, that's when we need to be notified if there's allegations of child abuse, sexual abuse, sexual assault. Um, any other type of criminal act in which the police needs to take action. That report needs to come to us. And that can happen a couple of different ways. That can happen either because the student disclosed it to a counselor or teacher and the school calls us directly and we go from there. Or it can happen because the student may have, um, told their parent or someone in the family or that student themselves. Calls the police and notifies us directly. And then we will address that, um, that allegation from there. That being said, no one is forced to be a victim. And what I mean by that is if we get a report and someone says, my friend told me that this happened. We're going to investigate that. We're going to make an attempt to talk to that person and try to investigate that allegation. But I'm going to tell you that there are times when, when people will tell us, I don't want to talk about that. I don't want to, I don't want to be involved. I don't want to talk to the police and I'm not willing to go any further. At that point, the investigation stalls. There's also a different scenario where someone may make an initial report to the police and we begin an investigation. And at some point along the way, they, they decide, hey, I'm done with this. I've had enough, can't take the emotional stress or whatever they're going through. And they decide that they're done. As our investigation continues, I want everybody to be clear that we do not make the determination on whether the crime happened and whether punishment will be extolled. What happens is we are just fact finders. We're going to, we're going to talk to people. We're going to, we're going to document their statements. We're going to try to collect any evidence that is available. And then our job is to present that to the district attorney's office or the city's, city attorney's office. Depending on the level of crime that we believe the elements have met. And it is, it are, it is those jurisdictions that make the decision on whether criminal charges will be filed. Unfortunately, that's not, that's not our job. And that's the way our justice system is designed, right? So that you have the checks and balances. Okay, does that answer your question, sir?
Last question up front.
Okay.
Well, in my view, like I basically pleaded not to talk to a male police officer. And I asked, could I talk to a woman? I was denied that request. And told, no, I need to talk to the male police officer. Because I didn't stand, okay, you don't have enough people. That's ridiculous. But I was not allowed to leave that room until I told you something that happened. I was, I was a 12 year old, of course. And I, you say, I, I, you, um, one of you says that I had to advocate there. I asked for my mother to be there. I was denied the right to have an advocate. So me scared as a 12 year old, being forced by a male police officer to talk about something that happened to me three days ago. Something very traumatic. What I was confused. I, I felt this for a very long time.
So to restate your question, you mentioned that in your situation, you had a situation in which you were called to the office and a male police officer was there and you were essentially forced, um, to divulge your information, tell your story to that police officer and that you were told you could not leave until you said something. Is that, is that accurate? Okay. Nor? That you asked to have your mother and you were denied. Okay. I'm not aware of your specific situation. And I will tell you that as you've heard tonight, the system is not perfect. Law enforcement has come a long way. I've been a police officer for almost 16 years. And the way that policing was, the way that we were trained when I first came on versus how we operate now is vastly different. That the training and personal skills that we have developed along the way have grown tremendously. And I'm very sorry for the situation that you went through as a 12 year old, young girl. I can't go back and, and fix that. Again, I don't know your specific situation because I wasn't there. But what I can tell you and what I can assure you now is that we do have systems in place. Our police officers are trained. We have, we have specific child abuse officers. We have one SRO and one child abuse officer. But our investigators are trained extremely well to not only document the report and investigate it, but also to show empathy and to treat everyone with that respect. And also to follow the law because that is the law, that an advocate will be offered. And if you request one, that, that will be given to you. Okay? As far as it goes with you speaking to a male police officer, yes, there are times when we just don't have a female available. I'm sure you can appreciate that this is a male dominated, um, job. Our depart, our department is working hard for that diversity, to have more females and have more people of different, uh, different cultures to be available for people in these situations where they might feel comfortable with someone different. But there are times when those people aren't available. In those instances, it would be best if you were told, hey, I get it. You don't want to talk to me. If you feel more comfortable and you want to go talk to your mom and maybe come to the station or hey, I can arrange a meeting with you on this date and time. That would have been my, my option to tell you at that time. So I don't know what happened in your specific scenario, but I'm sorry that happened to you. And I can assure you that that would not happen now.
I want to thank, uh, begin by thanking everybody from Burbank PD for being here tonight to support us in this moment and arriving on scene, uh, to manage the situation that we were dealing with obviously last week. And frankly, I think the level of empathy you just demonstrated is exactly the kind of healing we can enter into as a community when we have good conversation, when we create safe spaces to have it. Thank you for doing that in this moment, really. Um, it's an example, um, and we needed it. So thank you for that and for being part of that tonight. Anything else you would like to say to? Yeah, it, it's been a long night. So thank you, uh, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, for giving that conversation a shot. That was a big deal on your part too. So.
Yeah, thank you.
Dr. Hill, do the presentation.
Thank you. The, there are a couple of slides that I'm going to walk through at a high level. This is the same information that was emailed out to you earlier this week. Again, this is a framework and a summary of all the work that our employees have been doing for years. That was a question earlier. We do save school plans every single year. And sidewalks. So the safety walks on campuses, save school plans. If it came across as confusing in my email, I want to clarify that. That is a process where we have school site, safety committees that quite frankly, we have very low participation and attendance. Please get involved at your specific school site committee. They review this process. They raise concerns, they look at it, they do the walks, we do audits of the plans. Ms. Ponser Kamkar has suggestions and I appreciate that. We want everyone to be critically looking at the safety plans. In the email, when I mentioned that President Ferguson and I did a safety walk is after each event, whether it's here or nationally, internationally, we look at our campuses in a different way. And so we, since we had a real time event, our admin team, our district office team, school, Burbank Police Department, they're doing safety walks as well and they have a routine. President Ferguson and I wanted to do it from fresh eyes as a former student. And as someone that I'm not familiar, I'm familiar over the eight years, but I don't live that campus every day. So I'm going to see different things. He's going to remember things and see different things. He, and what we picked up on probably 90% are things that staff at the campus and students have brought up before. But it's important. That's why I'm just encouraging people to be part of our safety committees, get involved and to ask those questions and do that. Some of the other bullet points, I'm not going to go through all, but I just want to, these are things that we constantly be looking at. Continued lockdown and shelter in place training. How do we reduce ingress egress out of the school campus? We didn't do on each, I know at Burrows, it's a big, long-term conversation. How do we move all the bungalows onto that? That's a longer term facilities master plan, but we need to look at that. When we hear about incidents, we have to reduce the risk on campuses. You hopefully can see tonight, the partnership we have with Burbank Police Department, FSA, the Met Team. I can text call the chief at any time. Any of our, uh, staff can, uh, work with BPD. It is a unified approach and we are reflective and we want to get better. So your stories are important. That helps us. So I just wanted to highlight some of the things we do. WeTip is not new. We've been doing that. Stop Bullying is not a new email address. Um, but people don't know about it. So that's why I wanted to highlight that we need to be pushing this out and promoting it. So it's a.
And the question was, can you speak to where the WeTip goes? We're just making sure so few people at home are watching. Go ahead.
So WeTip is a third party outside organization. Yeah, they get the information. They then send a report back to the district that's anonymous of saying, here's a tip or a complaint. If the person wants to be on the record, they can follow up with that individual and have that back and forth and then give us contact information as well.
If you could come to, if you, well, we're, we're kind of, yeah, so I. So I, I am going to be clear. We're not going to do a back.
I understand.
This is a quick, no, no, hold on one second. Let me finish then. So we're going to take this one question and then we're going to get through this presentation. If there's capacity and time for additional questions, I'll do that. I just don't want to set us off on a weird path here and not get to what we need to get to.
And if we don't get to all your individual specific questions, there are going to be more town hall formats. Where Mr. Ferguson, Brown Act is the only time we get everybody together. Mr. Ferguson and I are going to have town hall where we can have more of a back and forth. Or you can follow up email and phone calls if we don't totally answer your questions tonight.
All right, thank you so much and I appreciate it. I had asked earlier about WeTip and I specifically wanted to understand who it comes to in the district, who's vetting it and what happens with those tips. That's what I'm trying to understand.
So it, depending on the nature of it, it's either going to go to HR if it's about an employee. If it's about, uh, we have, we have it can be used for COVID compliance, it's going to go to Director of Student Services. If it's a, like assault, uh, uh, it's going to go up to my, my desk if I get something like that. Someone goes to WeTip and it's something like a sexual assault, that will get routed to me as well. So it depends on the level of the category, the subject. So it's going to the district's senior admin, administration is the short answer. On the next slide, some of the changes that based on the recent events that we've done is, like I said, we've done additional safety walks, not just for the first time, just to see what else we can look at. Student IDs is a big thing. We gotta, we've talked about it earlier. We gotta make sure, we do print student IDs, different colors each year, but they can be, we hear from students. Well, we do lunch passes, we do others. So the combination of technology and the actual checking of IDs, we need to do both. So we're going to look at that. If we're limiting how you get onto campus, we have more supervision that can look through that. This culture, I'm going to keep stressing again, we all, if you see something, say something, report it, report it, report it. Even if you think the system's broken, report it. And then let's work through that system and improve the system. Uh, and then we need to make sure that people don't like to wear the badges. When I go on a campus and people's, it's the hairstyle, people like, oh, that's the superintendent. I'm still wearing my badge. If I can do it and people recognize me, everybody should do it. We all need to be wearing badges, students included. I know it doesn't look cool and you have to have a lanyard sometimes, but it keeps us safe. So let's make it cool. Give us a great ideas to do that, but we, I, we shouldn't have how people don't want to do it. We have to do that. Other thing about culture and habits, you heard it tonight. People don't want to use a gate code or walk all the way around, so they prop the door open. So that's around the bell. It's, I see, I, we saw in the walk, I see it when I go Burbank High. Somebody puts a backpack in the door so someone can get out and in easily. That's good for your friend, but it's also good for anybody that wants to walk on that campus. And I'm at, we're at any building around town. I, I was at a chamber of commerce meeting. They propped up a door because it's the closest parking lot. We don't think twice of it. If we want to make sure our schools are safe, we all have to take responsibility. If we see a door open, close it. Mr. Ferguson and I were walking campus, trash cans in the doors. Sorry, I, I removed those trash cans. So if you couldn't get out into your, uh, where you were going that day because someone moved the trash can, that was me. You try getting this building and the door's propped open, I'm closing it. We all have to model that. It's all of us doing that.
And, and we are also as a part of that conversation as well, based off of what site capacity is, trying to get to a regular check of all entrances and exits from a campus. So every hour, every 30 minutes, what is it? But each campus community will need to come up with that and report that back. So that way we're routinely talking about that. We're routinely looking at entrances and exits, um, and, and identifying that, you know, as, as a way of mitigating moving forward.
Um, I had a quick question. Right now, if a student sees, sees something suspicious on campus, who should I go to first?
Your immediate adult that you see. It's a supervisor, it's the custodian, it's the teacher, it's the administrator. We're all trained on know how to get that information to the right person at the right time.
Now, why do they identify the adults are? Cause you know, it's facial.
We should all be wearing our badges. So I'm going to go to the long-term things and we heard some of the ideas today. And this is where we want feedback. How do we prioritize these long-term ones? We're, we've kicked off a facilities master plan, which is a longer term plan. We've had those kickoff meetings this week, actually. Clearly they came to me as like, safety is important. Yes. We've had, we've done, there was a suggestion about. We've had, we've done, there was suggestion about audits. We have audits. Some things we've been able to prioritize with the funding we have, we've done it. We haven't been able to do everything. So we need to feed, we need the feedback of what are the simple things that we do immediately? And then what are the bigger things about redesigning structures and, uh, having architecture plans? We need those suggestions. You see on this page, these are some of the longer term suggestions that we need to work through, that we will continue to work through. And then finally, I just want, this is just the start of the conversation. So we already set up, you're see on, uh, March twenty eighth after spring break, we're going to set up a Zoom town hall. The link hasn't been sent out yet. We'll make sure it's sent out, uh, your habit before you get back from spring break. You can put it on the calendar as well. Another opportunity, if you prefer in person, which will be on March thirtieth, six o'clock at Luther Burbank. We want ideas on how do we improve all of this. You heard President Ferguson earlier talk about in addition, where the sexual assault of partnering with the city to have more of a summit focused on that as well. If we need more, we're going to have more. We have to continue that. We want to have broader discussions, but we also want to do what everyone's talking about. Take the words into action. And that also, that goes, there's district things we can do, but I'm going to reinforce the school site safety level. We have to make sure we're participating in that because your school site is where we're going to get a lot of action there. So work on that, prioritize it, get to the district and we prioritize as a whole, what can we, as a whole, what can we do with our resources now? Where do we have to get more resources? And we want feedback. If you feel like we're not spending money on the right things, tell us. We may not always agree, but at least we're having the conversation. And then we can talk about, and we must justify how we're prioritizing our funding. And again, we may disagree, but at least we're having that dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, questions? On our end, well, done that. So apologies. One of the things we, we've had early conversations about, but I want to bring forward tonight so we can continue talking about it is establishing communication standards. So this would be a, a, a one sheet, two sheet document sent home within enrollment packets at the beginning of the year that are very specific about after an incident happens on a campus where a campus is deemed, where it's deemed necessary to put the campus on lockdown. You will receive as a parent, a notification thirty minutes after that fact happened. So everybody knows what communication is coming and how the communication is coming, whether it's via email or via text message. Even if it is, the school is under lockdown, we are working with law enforcement and cannot disclose additional information at that time. Parents felt that communication was inconsistent, uh, or that they didn't get it at our, and so by guaranteeing that we are going to communicate at a certain point, at certain choke points. I think thirty minutes to an hour, I think is reasonable. We should see which one's most feasible. And then a follow-up that would happen that evening. This is in addition to campus-based conversa- uh, campus-based communication. So if the principal's doing that, that's great. But the district will also be sending out communications either thirty minutes or an hour after a lockdown has occurred. And again, and I, I, I leave that to staff to come back with the hard timelines, but there should be an evening that includes instructions about accessing the campus the next day, if there are any special instructions to be included in that moment. And then thirty minutes to an hour after, uh, any lockdowns occurring. So that way we also don't have Instagram accounts, things like that, that are frankly, again, telling the story in a way that produces additional fear. We've had that happen. You know, different principal, different time ago, you know, but where we, where students walked up, uh, walked off campus. So, uh, because of the fear that kind of built there. So definitely that communication standards being one. And then, uh, we had also talked about, uh, doing what's called an after-action report. So, uh, making sure that, um, after the conclusion of an investigation is completed, that there is a public version of an after-action report that's delivered, uh, and a confidential one. That is more detailed, that goes into the situations, the protocols, et cetera. And that also in these moments, assign somebody to take notes. So that we know moment by moment, uh, and we can evaluate the decision-making as it happened in, in an after situation. So that way we can make sure that we're learning, um, from these really. I mean, again, the world is absolutely nuts and the challenges it's presenting us with. The least we can do is again, take stock of what decision-making looks like in a moment that, that intense. Uh, and support our educators, our administrators who are forced to make these decisions, who again, went to school to educate, not to lock down campuses. But to give them the tools to better respond in those moments and us the tools as leaders to understand what the decision-making looked like in those moments. So we're not guessing. So if we could add those, uh, as, as additionals, um, I also want to reiterate a little bit of your point about heard from different folks tonight about the ID cards. You can go to Vons, you can go to blah, you know, and get one of either the magnetizing guns or anything like that, that can replicate the code. So that way you can access key card entries. That's intense. There's not a lot we can do on that front. Having said that, what Dr. Hill said tonight was something both of us encountered, both of us heard from administrators, both of us heard from campus supervisors, that there has to be a human and a technology component together. It, it's not enough to have humans checking IDs because guess what? They go, hey, I remember you come on in, right? And I will tell you, as I was entering those exits, you know, after lunch, after the lunch bell rang, when I was a senior in high school. Yeah. I mean, there were campus supervisors giving me a high five on the way in, as long as I brought him a burrito. You know, like that's real. Hey, that's real. Um, so, but I wasn't considering in my eighteen, seventeen-year-old mind, the impacts that I could have potentially had on others. I, I didn't have enough life experience to understand that leaving a door up. Let me tell you, both of our skins were crawling when we saw the doors propped open to the parking structure. Now, make no mistake about it, there were two campus supervisors outside, so on, on that path. So, okay. But yeah, trust me. So this is the first round of a walk, initial conversations. We've been to open house, you name it. The superintendent and I, in particular, just so we can keep it small, concise, we're not triggering public meeting laws and all the different ways that we are. Can go out and engage more proactively and we will bring back. Members of the board can rotate in, uh, to attend the different ones, but this is not ending. Uh, in terms of the listening, because we need to be accountable. But more than anything, if there are good ideas out there, we welcome them. Anything else for tonight? If not, we're going to go to the final period of public comment.
Yes, I have a couple of comments. That garage door is locked from the inside of campus. The panic bar is on the inside of the garage.
Correct.
So anybody coming in through the garage could get in, but you can't always get out. Which is, right, which is why the door gets propped open. So we need to take a look at that and see if there's a better alternative plan.
People have been asking, why is that unlocked? The fire code says on each level of a parking garage, you need to be get, be able to get out on that level. So when you're on the second, third level, the only way is, is to get onto campus. So we have to then look at, well, can you do, you can get out of the garage and I want to work with architects. Can we put a fence so that then it takes you right back out onto the sidewalk? So you can't get through to campus. Or do you lock that, that building so that you, you can get out, but then you gotta push it? So we have to funnel people back out. The way that, that structure was designed, we have to make sure people are safe in a fire, but also safe given the reality of society today. And I've talked to several staff at Burbank Kai and they're like, yeah, we got to redesign this whole thing. Cause for years, it's just, it's fire code, we must do it that way. But now we know that we have to redesign it and so we can accomplish both. Keep people safe and keep people safe from fire as well.
We don't want to get into every design.
No, because, right, there's, there's also additional problem with the ADA access there too.
So, yeah.
That's really awful.
So, okay, and that's a good point. When we talk about changes, you're going to hear us talk vague. Cause I'm not going to say these are all the things we found wrong in the site. So it's all about, we're going to look at facilities. You're going to hear terms like ingress egress, doesn't mean we don't know the specifics. We just aren't going to publicly talk about.
And the last thing that stood out to me, because I've been on that campus, in fact, the day of and the day after. And requiring enforcing that staff where ID outside the classroom or office is fantastic, but I think it should be that staff and students are required and enforced. I, not that it, it may or may not have changed anything that particular day, but hopefully if a campus supervisor, as they're, you know, asking kids to come in and they're holding up, but they're wearing it. And this one person didn't have one, that would have been a huge red flag right there. So I think and, and, yeah.
And we also talked about exploring the option of having a digital version too, so that it can't be like lost. And that's also an easier way to, to keep track of it too. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because I know it can be, I mean, if you lose it, you lose it, but you have it on your phone. Um, and the other thing we all, I think we also talked about too, is how we're tracking them. If they have to be reprogrammed every year, so you can't just hand your, pat your ID off to somebody else who then uses it the next year to get on campus.
Right. When I was there, they were asking for some, like if a kid said, I don't have my ID. Well, what do you have to show your student here? Do you have your, you know, something along those lines?
Part of our thinking there was, we're going to have at any one time, we could potentially have fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred students flowing into a campus in that moment. So again, how do you make sure again, both in technology and human support? That we can get students in, in a very real and organized fashion. Also getting students out, right? Limited lunchtime, everybody's doing a mad dash. They've got a limited forty-five, forty-six minutes-ish um, to go get it, run, you name it. So kids are breaking the, and they're using those push bar doors to get out. Um, and to get out faster. Um, so this is where I think again, inevitably we're going to have to have additional campus supervisors and a conversation about that. It is hard with hiring all those things. That's why we'll get a report back on that. But, you know, absolutely, Ms. Tabbett, Dr. Agakani and.
I also want to, want us to talk to some students. Our friend with kids goes there. She said, I have so many ways of ditching school if I want to. I think I don't want the, them to be the snitches, but at the same time, it's good to hear from the students because you think you know all the exits, you'll be surprised, you know? So maybe we talk to our students, students say, look, this is a concern. Tell us you know of any.
Can I, um, do we take?
We're going to jump to.
Roll every class period and turn it in, or is it only in the morning and?
Every period.
Every period. But it takes a while for office staff to sift through that, I'm sure.
Well, it's actually just scanned in. It's relatively quick. But a, a student, just flagging, a student may or may not know when a teacher has taken attendance, because sometimes it's done quietly by seating chart, right? So that's the other thing. So it's not the same as a report in. Uh, it, it's just kind of scanned in by each.
It doesn't go to the office.
It does go to the office, but it's a Scantron basically, as I recall, right? No. Now we've updated, now we've updated.
I was taking attendance on the computer twenty years ago in my classroom.
Great, see.
Oh, it's not on paper.
No.
Yeah, I'm expecting the little monitor to come in. It doesn't happen anymore.
See, that's good.
Yeah, we've, we've evolved.
Some things, okay. With that, any further questions? If not, I mean, we do have folks who have turned in cards again, so we want to make sure to get to those. Okay? Yes, this will be a three-minute public comment. It's not as long as the, the first one. So, um, uh, we'll begin with Geneva Gisela.
Um, okay, can I pull my like notes real quick? Of course. Okay, cool. Um, so the issue that we're having again is because this has been such a repeated, um, for lack of better wording, I want to say, I guess, pattern of behavior and just, you know, um, again, there is a lack of trust. There is a lack of feeling secure and safe within these schools. So I want to know what, what, how are we to feel more comfortable and not? Because again, especially as a female at these schools, there is a lot, it's a different playing field than with guys, you know? And it's, I just, it's not something that we should be thinking about. Kids deserve to feel safe, or sorry, safe. And I just want to know what's to be put in place and what can we expect from the board? How do we? Yeah, I guess feel more secure and safe within that, especially with, and, um, I, as you know, I forgot who said something about it. But they were saying to go to report adults, but again, that's also hard when, and I'm sure this isn't, this isn't directly at you, especially when, you know, on a daily school admin or who we deal with.
Yeah.
And if we are going to trusted adults that are not, um, doing their job and reporting, that are not giving you guys that information, it just feels very frustrating. It feels hard to know where to go in these instances. So. Yeah.
We will, we'll respond at the end like we did last time, but, um, we took down and we'll get you an answer.
Okay. Um, I think that was like my main point. Thank you.
Uh, next is Camila. Matthews, Mathers, Mathers? Anybody? Camilla? Left, okay. Liliana Landa? Left as well. Marley Tyler? Or, yeah, she left. Yisuk Lee, come on back.
Um, I just wanted to clarify with some of the board members here. I've heard board members say this phrase, and to be fair, people who have visited this phrase, man and woman, girls and boys. I wanted to know what is being done about transgender and people who are non-binary. How are they being included? Because I know personally, we do not have gender neutral restrooms. We do not have gender neutral locker rooms. Those who are transgender are having difficulty changing in a locker room they feel comfortable in and using restroom that they feel comfortable in, where they're not attacked. They're attacked from both sides. If they go into a woman's room, they're told like that they don't look like they, they're asked to basically verify who they are. And they're asked, I've had several incidents where teachers are asked, asking students, what's underneath your belt? What's in your pants? And that should not be happening.
Sure.
Secondly, um, I remember when I attended John Mearr Middle School. There was a sort of end of year report where you can anonymously write a report about your teachers and that it would be sent to some higher-ups. And that seems to have disappeared in recent years. And I think that would be greatly beneficial to come back if we could just have a card at the end of the year to talk about our experiences with teachers in the school. Because I know, I remember those reports and I was waiting for one, an opportunity to be given. And honestly, I want to, I want to thank the board for being here. I want, I would just lastly like to, you know, I, I'm hearing that a lot of new, um, help and support is being brought in. I want to know what is being done internally? How are we educating students and staff and higher-ups? So that this does not happen again. I realize that this is a lot to ask for, coming just from one student of thousands, but I just want to say that steps like these, that may be a lot of work to sift through thousands of like student reports, but I think steps like those that take hard hours will prevent meetings like these, that we don't have to have them. Thank you.
Marissa Ruellis? Hi, Gipti? Carolyn Baker? Joel Schlossman? There you go.
I like the way you took the question today with the class. Look at this comment amount of emotional vampire to suggest that somebody's coming here and taking joy in what's going on here. That's beyond bullshit. That's fucked up. And that's all on you to say, say that, two of those terrible words. You've said them before, Ms. Weisberg. I heard the attacks on Mr. Paramo and I used to have Mr. Paramo way up here and now he's down here. When he started admitting that he destroys texts, him and Mr. Hill entered into a conspiracy to destroy texts, texts. And you folks have done nothing about it? The light bulb went off in my head. Now I know why. We must maintain records of communications. It's the law. It's the Brown Act. And I haven't heard anything from any of you about my concerns. I had no idea of all these assaults going on in the campus. It's the, this is the most disturbing meeting I've ever been to and it's affected me and it should affect you. Mr. Hill, you should rethink allowing self-defense of these students. If somebody attacks one of these kids, they take their fist and pummel them in their face and without the fear of being suspended. Get behind our kids. All these testimonies were very moving to me tonight. Mr. Agakani, and I find you disingenuous. I saw you looking at your watch when speakers were speaking tonight. Cameras on campus record events. They do not prevent them. Why are kids allowed to stay in this district when they're done terrible things? You transfer them all to a special school. One school within the district, you put all the bad eggs. Those kids should be sent out of this district. I've talked to you about it before. One school within the district. You put all the bad eggs. Those kids should be sent out of this district. I've talked to you about it before. I want a public crime report for all these schools, not just you. Make it public. If there's events of crime, let the parents know about it. My three children, I have four children, three of my children were affected by one teacher. When I talked about it over at Mirror, the, the principal said, he's like that with everybody, and he summarily dismissed me. Your, your bully line was bullshit. I reported it and I was out of that office. Your threats, these threats and your, these threats, these events, these terrible things going on, you need to be thinking both external and internal. We've got problem employees here, and because of the MOUs with your union, Mr. Bast is here to talk about it. You can't get rid of the bad employees. It's gotta be overt. You, you know, you've got some slugs working for you, and you know who they are. Parents know who they are. There's no correlation between gunshots being close to schools and a threat. Get off of that. The Second Amendment is paramount in this conversation, that people are able to defend themselves.
At the timer? Okay.
I've got one quick thing. How can kids re?
Okay.
Listen, you give other parents thirty seconds. Give me thirty seconds.
Summer down now. I'm sitting here just trying to let you know. I'm gonna give you a little bit more time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
How can kids?
Please, thank you. Go ahead.
How can kids report a threat if no one answers the phone? I've called the Burrows High School many times. Push this button, push this button. How can they do it? How about call boxes? How about if we go back to the days of seventy years ago, when they had call boxes around school? That's another idea for you to consider.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you. To Gavin. You don't have to tell me that. I get emotional too, but I appreciate it. Try not to make people feel they're always unsafe in that moment. So Gavin Quentin.
Hey there, yeah, I just have a question about Gavin Quentin, Burbank Leader Newspaper. Met, I've talked to you, I've never met you in person. I just want to know, you know, a lot of these students have reported that they'll go to classes with abusers. Um, and I'm not sure what the process looks like after they've reported. Uh, do they still have to, you know, i- is, is it an option for them to move classes, take classes from the library over Zoom? Is there flexibility there? Um, when there's a Title IX report too, if we can talk a little bit about the process of what that looks like from the administration side and how it gets up to, uh, the district. Um, I think just with a lot of the cases that it sounds like it's a student who's done something terrible, another student is meant to kind of face the consequences of, of being the victim in that, in that situation. So, you know, not just talking about resources, but, you know, if they're there in class, how do they, how do they deal with that? And, and what's their report? You know, once they've made the report, what happens? Thank you.
Got it. Uh, all good questions. Last speaker is Bjorn Bacon. Oh, one more, sorry.
One more.
One more. Sorry about that.
Hello again, everyone. Thank you so much for your, um, vulnerability in the beginning, uh, when you guys, uh, first started talking. I feel like that's really effective on healing and going together, moving forward with this. Um, like I said, I'm not part of USD, but I still live in Burbank. I feel like it's very important to invest in some kind of way. And, um, I think you have these opportunities and I would like to come to more town halls and such. Um, uh, I was thinking about, um, if there's a possibility of having maybe more specialized people in mental health. I know you mentioned that before. Maybe I understand, like, there's too available. Maybe like one or two more, because I understand you have a lot of students compared to my school, and I know it's a whole different ballgame with different things. Um, a suggestion for like a parking structure. I know my, like I said, my school is a different money, different income. But if it's a possibility, our school has a system where you have to contact the security guard to open it, and the only way to get out is through an automated door, but there's no inward way. There's only an outward way. There's two separate gates. If that's available, and also on the side, we have like a bigger entrance, but that's always closed off after entry is, like, school is like eight-thirty, gates closed. The only way to go is to the very front or to contact the school. I've seen that's been effective. Um, another thing, I know it's kind of a vague area between criminal, like the police and you guys, but when we hear reports about, you know, certain students, um, allegations, is there a way to, not necessarily like, because I know it's not your place to punish them, but is there like a way to regulate and like, hold them accountable in a certain way? Um, I'm, I don't know what would be the best direction for that, but I was thinking, you know, like, these girls feel uncomfortable with them being present, but at the same time, you can't make a final decision, because I know, is enough evidence proven? Is that fair to take them out? Because we can have those instances where it's boy cried wolf and it's unfair. Just want to make sure justice is universal in both sides, and I was making sure some of that could be mentioned. Well, um, other than that, I thank you guys for this time and having this meeting. Thank you, guys.
Uh, last speaker is Linda Biddo. Apologies, I, I didn't mean to skip your card. And that's the last card I have at this time. Morning.
Thank you. One thing I wanted to mention, we do have two gender-neutral bathrooms in the office, or the nurse's office. And then right outside the student center, there's also a gender neutral. So we, I don't know about the rest of you. Yes. Um, Emily, thank you. Um, yes, I know that you didn't get rid of the SROs completely, but you did take their office away at the school site, which means they're not on campus during lunchtime. They're not on campus during nutrition. They're not there all the time. Their lease car is not out front all the time. They're not there before school. They're not there after school when there's all the chaos of releasing kiddos. So they don't, they're not physically on the campus any longer permanently. They are there, if we call. Burbank PD is wonderful. They come really quickly, but they're not, they don't physically have an office any longer, which is really sad. Um, let's see, what else did I write down? Um, I also want to mention, I don't think I mentioned it before. I know it was briefly mentioned, putting mesh up on the gates, because, yeah, those kiddos are handing through lunches, but we also don't know what else is coming through. Is it fentanyl? Is it guns? Is it knives? Is it whatever? But they're constantly coming through. And it would be a one-time cost to put mesh up on all those, um, on all those gates. If you mentioned, um, if there's a lockdown to contact the families within a half hour, I'd say, once you know that there's a lockdown, send out that notification now, because the kids have airdrop. And those families will know it, and within a half hour, we'll be inundated just like we were last time. So I would say, do it as quickly as possible.
Got it.
Um, checking the IDs, how can we do it? We can do it if we have more campus security. Um, again, these kiddos come on really early in the morning. Um, if there's nobody there, you did ask about, um, if the kids don't have their ID. They send them into the office and we check on areas. Are they, are they a current student? Are they a dual-enrolled student? Are they supposed to be at this time or on later, later? Uh, we do, when we withdraw a student, we try to get that ID card, so they can't come back on campus, but it's not always successful, because the kiddos aren't always there when we disenroll a student. Um, they might be disenrolling for reasons that, you know, they don't live in the area, but they still want to come back on campus and hang out. Okay, and this one's gonna make you feel like you were dropped in a polar ice bath, but I really like those officers who are on campus or some people that have anxiety over it. I get that. But I feel, and many, many other people feel, more protected when they have people there with guns that are trained to have those guns. I also want to go one step further with, uh, uh, teaching, um, self-defense. I would like to see teaching gun safety too, like many other campuses around this country do. They can have a combination, gun safety and, um, self-defense. When people know how to handle guns safely, it's a tool for safety measures. That's what it is. Um. I'm glad that we have these stores in Burbank, the gun stores in Burbank. You brought that up. I'm glad that we have legal businesses for people that want to protect their Second Amendment rights. So people that can go in there and, my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Biddo. Okay, staff responses?
Thank you, President Ferguson, and thank you to the speakers. I'm gonna give very quick responses. I know this is an ongoing dialogues, but, so if I'm, I'm not dismissing your comments. I just, I know it's late and gonna be more conversations. Uh, Geneva, how females feel safe at school? We need to continue the dialogue. We talked about having, uh, Burbank Family Service Agency, they're trained trauma experts to facilitate conversations with our students. I want them to facilitate the conversation with students, hear from students, have the experts give us recommendations on how to do that. We're receptive for that feedback. We'll keep working through that. Uh, it was mentioned briefly, for transgender students, they can work with our administrators for, uh, if they're transitioning or they're transgender or how, or they can work with each administrator, and we develop a plan. So we have gender-neutral restrooms, as I was mentioning. There's other things that we can implement. So if you're hearing from your classmates that they don't know where to go, or there needs to be more, please have them contact any administrator on campus, and we'll make sure a plan is developed for them. Um, the comment that you said, I would love to follow up offline. If you know who the teacher was, I want to investigate that. That is totally unacceptable and it's appalling, so I want to get facts on that, do an investigation. Um, end-of-year report, great idea. I'll bring that back to the principals and my team after spring break and see how do we implement this. Uh, we do an annual school satisfaction survey. Uh, there's a comment box. I read all those. I get thousands of comments. Uh, so, but having specific school site ones, I think that's very important. Uh, in educating, you know, we have to keep talking about all the things we do have, um, and continue to share what we're doing. Uh, just, uh, police reports, they are public crime reports. They are available. If there's ways we can publicize that even more, we'll do that. Um, yeah, I'm gonna talk to the school sites about, I just need to understand more. If someone can't answer the phone, is it rolling to a voicemail? What's our response time? Uh, I'll talk to staff more about that. Um. Uh, Gavin, real quick, on the, so when students have allegations or claims, uh, about abusers, we start the investigation. We actually have a protocol sheet that we work with. We, we work with the students based on the conversation. We keep revising this, what we're focused on, but we get the information. Immediately, they're notifying the principal and district office Title IX. And then as we're collecting, the administrators initiate the incident. If it raises a level, we have to bring in the school resource officer. Usually that's right away. They're with us, lockstep to do that. They complete, uh, a report, DCFS report about child abuse or based on the allegations. That's submitted immediately. Then we notify, we notify parents and guardians. We document it into our student information system. And we're working with the family, the student and the family of saying, we say, okay, if someone has an allegation against someone else, we first talked about not the victim, the one that's alleged, and say, okay, we may need to change classrooms right now because of this. Sometimes the victims say, I want to change. That's more comfortable to me, but we don't want to move the victims. We want to move the one allegation. And then it's just protection for both as we go through the investigation and come back. If there are missteps or people feel like that wasn't the experience they have, I want to hear that. We want to learn from that and make sure that we're following through on that. Um, and so that kind of talks about the Title IX. And then based on the allegations and the police reports and investigation, we go, there's a very formalized process that we do that. I know there's been comments about what was reported or not. I just remind all of us, we weren't in the room when conversations happened. We don't know what's, we investigate after the fact. So if someone makes a statement, says, I said this, other says, I heard this, or I said that. Everyone acts on the information they have and they're understanding that moment. Please, for this whole process, let's not jump to conclusions on what's, I, I keep hearing that we're, we are trying to trial people in public. That is not okay. I don't know there's passion. We need to speak our truth and tell the right people, but there's processes to do that. When we do it like this, we're assuming we know all the information. We don't. The people in the room or where the event happened, and the people involved know the information. And then we have outside people look at it and make sure what is the bottom line. Um. Bjorn, thank you for the suggestion. Um, mental health, we do have student care centers. We are continuing to expand our partnership with the city and family service agency, so we have more mental health resources, but we see we need more and more. I love the ideas that you suggested about the garage and, um, uh, your, just your comments about justice, making sure it's universal. That's kind of why I alluded to the comment, like, we gotta protect everybody involved until an investigation and the judicial system plays out. And we have to keep doing that. Um. Linda, uh, the office on campus, that was my decision. SROs, we have one per twenty-two campuses. I did not see why we had a dedicated office at our high schools where they could sit. They're so busy, they're around. We don't see them on campus, because they're going to all the sites. We do have one vacancy. We need to talk about the SRO model. But the goal is not to have them on our campus. If they need confidential space, our administrators will get that to them every single time. But it wasn't to set up an office where they can sit there and do other work. We want them interacting with kids, working on scar reports, making sure we're doing the investigation. Um, and thank you for the other suggestions, and so we're making sure that we review those and vet pros and cons on those. Thank you.
Thank you. Responses from my colleagues?
Thank you, um, Ms. Lee. Thank you for your thought about, uh, report card on teachers at the end of the year. Great. But if you're really having an issue with the teacher, don't wait till the end of the year. Speak up, find an adult advocate, get them to contact administration something and get that resolved. Um, sometimes, well, get that resolved sooner as opposed to waiting to the end of the year. Um. Uh, I think, I think the rest, I think that was the one thing I wanted to say. I think that's good. Thanks.
Other comments, Marai?
Oh, um, there were suggestions about having mesh on the fence. I think there is an opportunity, maybe we can get meshes with advertisers that, that would support the school. Maybe support our security system cameras. But if you're gonna put mesh up, I think it will help maybe get some of the local businesses. Because it's very easy to print their business logos maybe or something. I've seen it in some of the schools, but I think that.
We can certainly bring it back for a conversation. I'm struggling a bit. I, I, I don't want to see Pepsi, uh, when I.
Pepsi is not gonna show up.
Having said that, so that.
Local parent businesses.
I hear you. Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it, sorry.
Okay. Dr. Weisberg?
Two things. Um, Ms. Lee, you bring up some interesting points. Dr. Hill, is there a way that we can sort of work proactively with administration? Because I know that for some of our transgender, non-binary students, they're not gonna feel comfortable going to administration and saying like, hey, I'm not okay with what's available. So I wonder if there's a way we can troubleshoot, like, how do we do that proactively either? But, and I don't know the answer to that yet, but I think we want to make sure that students aren't feeling like they have to, if they're, if it's new, if they don't feel comfortable, how can we help them navigate that on the front end?
I, I just want to, part of the reason we're using pronouns more and more, so that we identify based on the pronoun, then we are proactive. So either if students are telling us they're transitioning or tell us by their pronouns, then we can say, these are the services available, but I'll make sure I'm reminding staff they're doing that. It's my understanding that when, when they hear that, they, make sure, do you know about these resources available, but.
Okay. Okay. Um, so thank you for that. That's a really important thing to be thinking about. Um, the feedback survey, as a teacher, it's always really helpful, slightly scary, but always really helpful. Um, and, you know, I think you, you made a reference to like, it's, you're just one person, but the things that you're suggesting, that everybody's suggesting, helps every single student and teacher and staff member that everybody said tonight. Um. Your, my, my school also has like the automatic gate things, and it's great. I imagine it's expensive, but it's a great thing to think about, just the sort of mechanics. Right, right. Um, and I really like your question about how we hold students accountable with the parameters that we have. Um, and I have no idea, but I hope that we'll continue to talk about it. Um, Ms. Biddo, thank you again. I'm glad that Dr. Hill clarified that. Oh, um, one of the self-defense classes, Ms. Mercusin at, at Burbank High told us at back to, or at Open House, that there's already a parent there who's offered to do self-defense classes. And I think it's a fantastic thing for us to look into at our other campuses. It's just a great skill to have, period, as you move through the world. Um. The only other thing I did want to say was a comment from the first round, but I, I would feel bad if I didn't say something. Somebody referenced, um, students coming in from other areas as sort of the undertone of like, those, those people. And I, I work at a private school, and, um, we have students from Palmdale, North Hollywood into Hunga. I mean, like, it doesn't, we are lucky to have the students that come in from outside. It helps us run. It helps with our budget. It helps keep our community diverse and thriving. There's absolutely, to me, it was a little dog-whistly, and I just wanted to, to highlight that we are.
Was a dog whistle.
We are so happy to have our students who come to us from other places, um, especially because often those students like really want to be here, and that's awesome. So I, I wanted to say that there's no, that, that's a, a false equivalency that's very dangerous. And I, I forgot to say it last time, but I did want to say it, like, thank you to all of the students and families that choose to make Burbank, uh, Burbank USD their home. You're really important to us, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Uh, uh, Yisuk, I, I really want to thank you for looking out for our LGBTQ community. I, I, um, I'm gay, uh, so I, I appreciate that and think, yeah, why?
What?
Um, but I, but I, but I definitely think about that. And, you know, one of the first conversations Dr. Hill and I had as we were quite literally reacting, but also in very real ways, trying to move resources, right? And as ex, you know, I was like, you handle systems, we'll handle legislation. Let's go. Um, and, and one of the things that was a real conversation that really hit us was a part of the intersectionality of security, right? Of, of how necessary it is to do deep dives with your culture, um, because you often find that you have to confront a lot of bi- Um, because you often find that you have to confront a lot of bias. Um, especially on the human systems. Um, and we don't like to admit that we are part of that, but it was an example, for instance, when I said a little bit earlier, when I came in late from lunch and those campus supervisors would let me in without question, right? Without batting an eye. Who am I in the world? What do I look like in the world? Yeah, that's a different experience than what other students are having who are told, take off your hoodie as a first response to seeing them. Okay? So we've gotta have that layer of, of conversation as well as we go about this. A part of our town halls are again about really trying to lift up as many issues as possible. Uh, Geneva, um, who's left us tonight, I have to tell you, it's the second time I've seen her at a school board meeting and both time, um, she has been such a terrific student advocate in so many ways and she has made me think, and I know that just interacting with her, uh, I know I'm a better leader. She asked us this tonight, uh, before she left, you know, how do we know we're gonna feel safer? Um, the answer is not overnight.
Yeah.
Um, the answer is, and again, like, we have to bear with this, right? This is what doesn't get casually wiped away at night if you understand what you're responsible for. We have an understanding based off the testimony we received tonight from a lot of young women that their daily experience, which we require, which state law requires of them, uh, is an uncomfortable one. That they live in that discomfort daily. Um, we may be able to answer some of that. We are likely unable to answer all of it. But for me, and I know, I know for everybody up here, that's a burden that we're happy to talk about at ten thirty at night. That we are happy on a Friday night to break it down. Uh, and to stop looking at your watch. Um, but in real moments, demonstrate because we signed up for this. It's not just that we love you because this is a good political moment to love you. Ten thirty, nobody's watching. Nobody's watching.
Just us two.
Um, but I hate that young women in this, and, and young men too, feel uncomfortable. Um, and that I know all of us are very committed to working to change as expeditiously as possible. That comes with listening. Because one set of experiences, we heard eight different sets of experiences tonight, all emergencies on some level. But we've gotta be leaders and a part of our responsibility as leaders is to take out of all the voices and to escalate and to prioritize. And if you don't like how we prioritize, you vote differently in the next election, right? But, but that is, and, and we prioritize through our values. So our values tonight are we hear you. That there is a lot of work that has to do with everything from the systems that take care of these young men and women who are reporting or don't take care of them, to the physical infrastructure of our school sites and our campuses. There's a ton of work to do. For those young women who came forward last, uh, tonight, if you are in a healthy enough place and you have the capacity, I need your help. Um, and if there's trust that can be built there or a way that we can work together, that you feel safe to do so, that would be huge. I'm not saying it answers all pains. I'm saying it could prevent somebody else's. And the president of the school board is asking for your help. End of your report, I think that that's good for informational purposes. Uh, Mr. Schlossman, you don't hear me necessarily, I'm responding to you. So you don't necessarily hear me respond to you on personnel issues because they are personnel issues. But I hear you. Um, and, um, when it comes to suggestions regarding the tip line, I, I wanna understand these tip lines, how we're, you know, checking in. It's a part of that conversation. So I appreciate that. Uh, and then last but not least, Ms. Biddo. Uh, I was, I was raised in a family, uh, that, and I grew up around guns. Um, I realize that that is an approach for many, uh, in terms of there's, in terms of expressing and exercising their Second Amendment, Second Amendment amendment rights. I don't demonize them for that. I grew up around this community. I understand that. I'm not sure I wanna do that in our school sites. Uh, I don't wanna do it in a world where I, I see constant shootings and I don't think the answers are adding more guns to a campus, more bullets potentially flying at folks. I, I think we understand that there are folks who can be trained. My grandpa was so good at training and so careful and, and I bonded with him and I respect him more because of how he taught me to operate a firearm. Uh, you know, I don't go hunting. He would only do target shooting and he said, you never point your gun at anything you don't wanna destroy. Um, so don't send any mixed messages here. Um, made me practice for three years with blanks before I ever got to any part ammunition. So again, I respect this community and culture. I just don't think that it has a place on our campus in today's world. Uh, I do, uh, organize self-defense classes, uh, as a part of my, my job. Um, uh, my former boss, Assembly Member Nazarian, organized over four hundred classes, uh, in his, uh, throughout his like lifetime of service as both an employee and as an assembly member and over a thousand, uh, primarily targeted at women, but the truth is, is the whole community, uh, can benefit from, uh, self-defense classes. So where that's a possibility, great, but I think we need to again, look at this through a spectrum. And for students with disabilities or mobility challenges, how do they exercise safety in those moments? If we're gonna provide that, we've gotta be understanding this through an intersectional lens. Um, so with that, you have all been here with us a lot tonight. I'm not running away. They should, everybody. Um, thank you to everybody who continues to send their young people to our schools. It is the privilege of a lifetime to educate them. Um, and we appreciate more than you know, the trust that you put in us. Uh, even when there are doubts, you should know that our commitment is so real and is so genuine to get it right. So we are gonna continue this conversation, but for now we are adjourned and thank you for coming.